Oh, huh? Oh, God.
My God, enjoy it.
All right, all right, all right.
Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Thomas, roll call, please.
Dr. Bellamy?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here, sorry.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Signal?
Here.
And just a reminder, and in honor of the second annual CYM, Close Your Mouth and Listen, Day, we're going to spend a minute in silence. So it's Alexan, and he was here last council meeting, and most community members know him. But, and I'll just read before, "The activities are to encourage all citizens to be still and quiet for one minute, take a moment to think before you act, if angry, pause and count to ten, be mindful when speaking, choose your words that are helpful not harmful, and during this day allow persons to share their thoughts and feelings without interruptions by others." He came through the office this morning to remind us, and so we'll just spend our minute. Okay, thank you. I was gonna do two, see if anybody noticed. Two minutes to see if anyone noticed. Okay, next we have announcements, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Yes, thank you. I wanted, just have a couple announcements. I want to introduce to the public our new CAT Director, and that's Mr. Garland Williams.
Come up and introduce yourself, say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Once again, my name is Garland Williams. I'm the director, new director of CAT, which is Charlottesville Area Transit. Looking forward to having an opportunity to have an individual meeting with each one of you. Looking forward to engaging with the community about their needs and how we can improve CAT. So looking forward to up to the challenge, and hopefully we can have productive meetings and make sure that we make CAT the most productive organization we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carey. That's the gentleman right there, Mr. Williams. Oh, and the next individual I want to introduce is Ms. Courtney Cacation, and I know I'm gonna say her name wrong, last name wrong, I hope I got it close. She's the new director of the Charlottesville Albemarle Visitors and Conventions Bureau.
Thank you. I'll make it easy. It's Caucasian like vacation for the tours in person. Works out nicely. I'm Courtney Cacation. I'm the new Executive Director of the Charlottesville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau. Really excited to be here. I just moved to the area for this position, and really looking forward to promoting all this community has to offer and showing our return on investment through a lot of economic impact. So, thank you for having me this evening.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
Okay, are there any other announcements?
I have. Oh, sorry. Someone else have? The Charlottesville 12 60th Anniversary Commemoration, and this is on behalf of Mr. Alexan and those who undertook in the Charlottesville 12. Charlottesville 12, students who integrated Charlottesville Public Schools in September 1959 will host a 60th Anniversary Commemoration Reception on Saturday, September 28, 2019, at 11:00 a.m. at Beaufort Middle School. Highlights of the program include the Charlottesville 12 Original Timeline, the Student Parent Comments, Charlottesville City School Yard Garden, a tribute to the Charlottesville 12, the Charlottesville 12 Scholarship Fund Award Winners, and these will be acknowledged, excuse me, there will also be an acknowledgement to Olivia Ferguson McQueen, one of the Negro plaintiffs, to challenge the integration of Charlottesville Public Schools, and Eugene Williams, one of the NAACP leaders who fought for school integration. Local city officials, school board members, and the community are welcome to attend. Again, the Charlottesville City Council had proclaimed Sunday, September 8, 2019, Charlottesville 12 Day, and for anyone who would like to attend, once again, that date will be Saturday, September 28, at 11:00 a.m. at Beaufort Middle School. Hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, I have a quick announcement. There is a new member of the Wes Bellamy family. And Counselor Bellamy, would you please introduce her to us?
Put me right on the spot. I love you.
I got your permission.
You did, thank you.
I got trouble last week.
On this past Thursday, my wife and I, we brought in our fourth child, Stokely Grace Bellamy, at 11:41 a.m. Six pounds and 12 ounces, 20 inches long. So she is already shown mom and dad, specifically dad, who is the boss. So please, keep us in prayer. We're really happy that she's here, and pray that we can get some sleep.
Are there any other?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone who is here who would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda?
I am Johnny Hall of the Hall Group in Freyspring. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant is in Item C for the Charlottesville Albemarle Adult Drug Treatment Court, is a wonderful step forward keeping offenders out of jail, let's include all suspects accused of crime. Our criminal justice system is in disrepair, and I believe we can take steps to help the Albemarle Charlottesville Community Reentry Council to help convicted felons ease the burden they experience of reentry into society. Offenders and persons accused of crime are often jailed, even without trial. I believe pre and post-trial suspects accused and jailed should be allowed more people hired at OAR in the capacity of psychologists, paralegals, and even lawyers and psychiatrists to enable such defendants to have pretrial briefs that present their truth of what they are suspected or accused of, to be told and recorded so that judges, plaintiffs, and prosecutors can have foreknowledge of their side of the story. A fair and just verdict can then be reached. I urge our city council to consider hiring these above professionals to work with OAR and the State Parole Board in their offices on Harris Street. The effort can be enhanced by new smartphone and recording of text used by police. I'll soon explain. And in the future, if the new city council policy court, Police Complex, is built, a new suspect accused aid and restoration facility can be integrated therein, I have job and employment ideas to reduce recidivism. I will share them at a later date. I hope city council will match the $305,48 provided now in September of 2020. It will be well worth the investment. 12-month substance-free is the goal and dream for a defendant in the Charlottesville Albemarle Drug Treatment Court. Let's provide full-time, tax-paying employment for recovering addicts in order for them to provide for their children and families while in recovery. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda? All right, Ms. Thomas, could you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda, 1A, Minutes, August 15 Form-Based Code Joint Work Session, August 19 Special Meeting. B, Appropriation, Funding for Virginia Temporary Assistance to Needy Families, Employment and Training, VTET Pilot Program, $50,000, first of two readings. C, Appropriation, Charlottesville Albemarle Adult Drug Treatment Court Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant Award, $305,48, first of two readings. D, Appropriation, Refund of Tax Payment to East Market Street LLC, $16,173.30, first of two readings. E, Appropriation, Virginia Department of Historic Resources, 2019-2020, Certified Local Government Grant Funding for 10th and Page Neighborhood Historic Resources Survey, $31,590, first of two readings. F, Appropriation, Albemarle County, Funding for Albemarle County Resident Workforce Development Training, $13,395, first of two readings. G, Appropriation, Fiscal Year 2020, Fire Programs Aid to Locality Funding, Fire Fund, $158,343, second reading. H, Appropriation, Safe Routes to School Non-Infrastructure Grant Award, $93,125, second reading. I, Appropriation, Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS, HIV, HOPWA, $240,642, first of two readings. J, Appropriation, Virginia Housing Solutions Program Grand Award, $484,785, first of two readings. K, Resolution, Amendment to Alley Policy, first of one reading. L, Resolution, Authorized Transit Director to Sign Federal Transit Administration Documents on Behalf of the City, first of one reading. M, Ordinance, Amend Charlottesville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau Operating Agreement, second reading. N, Ordinance, Release of a Portion of a Gas Line Easement, Shops at Stonefield, second reading. O, Ordinance, Valley Road, Monroe Avenue, and Jefferson Park Avenue Easements, second reading. P, Ordinance, Amendment to the Text of the City Zoning Ordinance, City Code Section 34-896, to Modify Access Requirements for Various Uses, second reading.
Thank you. After hearing it read, is there anyone who has any comments about an item on the consent agenda? Okay. Just a question about if you all checked into M about the amendment for the CACVb and alcohol.
And, Madam Mayor, I did discuss this with Mrs. Cacation and Mr. Engel, and they're willing to make a statement as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi. We, the CACVb went from the fiscal agent being the city to the county as of January 1st, and so this is really just putting in the regulation for us to be able to purchase alcohol, just as we did when the city was the fiscal agent. Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
No, it wasn't clear that we had done that since the amendment, so that was part of the question.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
All right, and then for me, I just want to pull O and vote on it separately.
The Valley Road, Monroe Avenue, Jefferson Park Avenue Easements?
Yes.
So I move that we adopt the consent agenda, less Item O.
Second.
All right, are there any further questions or comments? All right, please vote. All right, that carries, five to zero.
I move that we adopt Item O, the Valley Road, Monroe Avenue, and Jefferson Park Avenue Easements.
Second.
Are there any further questions or comment? All right, please vote. All right, that carries four to one. All right, next we have the city manager's response, so Dr. Richardson, to the September 3rd council meeting.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I don't have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
It's easy. All right, and so now we start the Community Matters section of the meeting, and first up, we have Mayor Carey.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Carey, City Resident. Mr. Richardson, you don't have nothing to say?
Nothing to say.
Okay.
Unless you want me to comment or something.
So then the pilot is gonna go through?
Yes.
Okay, that's half of my three minutes right there. He kind of jumped in on my time. But anyway, now that he has said okay, I just want to say, well, you gonna say, Ms. Gavin, are you gonna apologize for misspeaking about vinegar hill and star hill being one and the same? Kind of like interrupting our black history in Charlottesville? I mean, you just misspoke. I mean, it's not like you stuck a dagger in anybody's heart, you just messed with the black history of the city. Do we get an apology? Or do we have to wait another 400 years? I got time. You want to wait till I finish my three minutes before you say something? Oh, you don't know? Okay. All right, well, I can't forgive you if you don't say anything. I want to so bad. But anyway, I didn't say anything in February at Black History Month. I didn't say anything in June, at Juneteenth. We didn't have a meeting on August 20th for the landing in 1619, and then in 19 whatever you say it was, 65 or whatever, which I was still living here, and you hadn't moved here yet, saying that vinegar hill and star hill was one and the same, and we trying to understand why you said that. But you want clarify with the black community why you said that. But I was interrupted one night, Madam Mayor wouldn't let me speak, while you set up there and used my name three times before break, kept on talking about vinegar hill and how you were right and everything. And then when I got you right here to apologize about it, Mr. Stout from the Dale of Providence, Ms. Hill, y'all even had a little phone call going along, trying to say that I threatened your life. Y'all had me on a speakerphone call, trying to make me say that I said I was gonna kill you and all this kind of stuff. Now, you know if I wanted your life, it would have been taken right there. But I didn't want your life. I just wanted an apology for all the damages that you had done to the black people in Charlottesville, even when you were on the school board. How you humiliated those black women down there in Garrett Square, and now children. You misspoke then too. But you refuse to even acknowledge the fact that vinegar hill and star hill are not, they're not the same, Ms. Gavin. So I'm just asking. Are you gonna just say I misspoke?
Thank you.
And let it go? Are you gonna say that?
Ms. Carey?
Okay, oh, okay. There'll be more meetings before the end of year. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Carpenter?
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Nancy Carpenter, City Resident. I'm here tonight, once again, along with other folks, to ask the city council to approve the bylaws and to pass an ordinance for the implementation of the Police Civilian Review Board. You've had a lot of good folks that have put in their time, sweat, and effort to make something that is viable for all the citizens of this community to use. Because interactions with the police happen in all neighborhoods, all economic levels, all gender areas, student, non-student, it doesn't matter. And we do not have an outlet for those complaints. Or you might say that we can contact our local city police, but we really need a strong, independent board that reports directly to you, similar to the Planning Commission and the Human Rights Commission and any other direct, and the HAC, that report to you directly. They must be able to review all the information and all the complaints. We've recently had an incident in one of our communities that certainly would rise to the level if it was me, I'd want to complain and complain and complain. But there's no outlet for that at this time. And you also need to fully fund the staffing request that your panel proposed so that this board can be functional. Many of your other independent boards have staff, your Human Rights, your HAC, your Planning Commission. There should be no difference when it comes to the Police Civilian Review Board. We've had enough studies, task forces, and panels to underscore why this is desperately needed. Many of you, or some of you rather, want to have a legacy as you leave the dais of city council. A strong, functioning, fully-funded PC RB would be that legacy. A legacy is more than a code and more than a city moniker. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Thomas Oliver. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tom Olivier, speaking for Advocates for a Sustainable Albemarle Population, or ASAP. I'm a resident of Albemarle County. I have laryngitis this evening, but I will speak in a way that I hope you can hear. We live in a period of acute environmental crises: climate change, biodiversity loss, degradation of agricultural lands, and many more. We must resolutely address the most pressing individual environmental crises. With good reason, the city and county now have climate action programs. But we also must recognize that many individual crises, or environmental crises that now plague us, stem from mankind's unwillingness to live within the limits set by our natural support systems. Expansion of the global human population and economy since 1950 have come with great losses in the planet's ecosystems. Clearly, we now are faced with a need to broadly repair our relationship with nature. We must reduce our impacts and demands on natural systems to a degree that allows natural systems to coexist with us. We must live in a way that allows persistence of sufficient natural systems for support of our future generations. We must learn to live sustainably, that is, within the limits set by our planet, its finite planet and its wonderful biosphere. If we have the will to transform our societies in ways that are necessary to become sustainable, the tide of environmental crises may be turned and our future generations may be able to live good lives. Given the urgency of climate change and other environmental crises, and the scale of responses clearly now required, ASAP believes that now is the time for the Albemarle Charlottesville community to commit to and take steps to become sustainable. To that end, ASAP has developed a sustainability challenge for our community. It includes proposals for city and county comprehensive plans. Our proposal is posted on the ASAP website, ASAPVirginia.org. Those of you on the council have already received a digital version of our sustainability proposal. Our goal with the document is to outline sufficient initial steps in a process that moves us toward sustainability. We hope to discuss our proposal with members of the community in coming months, and we look forward to everyone's responses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Harold Foley.
Good afternoon, Council. Harold Foley, City Resident, organizer for Legal Aid Civil Rights and Justice Justice Program. I'm going to see if I can assign to you. Go ahead, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Walker and City Council members Bellamy, Hill, Signer, and Galvin. Tonight, I ask the city council create a permanent independent civilian review board. I am grateful to the initial Police Civilian Review Board and congratulate them on unanimously signing off on the bylaws on July 1st. Such a long and thorough process it has been. The city needs a permanent review board, so now city council must approve the bylaws and create and pass an ordinance and appoint members to that board. The city needs an independent board with the authority and funding necessary to review complaints, conduct investigations, and have access to documentation and data. The city also needs the assistance of two staff positions for oversight, as well as funding equal to 1% of the police department's budget. I am grateful to city council for passing the resolution to carry out the process. My great hope now is the city council will fulfill these needs by unanimously approving the bylaws, creating the much-needed board, appointing its members, and passing an ordinance enabling the creation of a permanent independent review board. The review board cannot be an advisory board. I ask the city council vote for an independent board that has transparency, staff assistance, adequate funding, the authority to review complaints, to investigate, and have access to documentation and data, especially in light of studies over the years of so-called stop and frisk and juvenile and adult disproportionate minority contact. The intent is to improve community police relations through systemic change. I hope the new board will be able to start operating in March 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to make sure people are aware who are commenting on the CRB, we do have a meeting this Thursday?
Thursday at 6:00.
At 6:00 o'clock. And so hopefully you all are aware.
It's in city space.
In city space.
Yes.
And that time is adjusted just also for the public's knowledge that we no longer have the disproportionate minority contact meeting that same evening that's been postponed.
So.
I have one question. Would the public be able to comment?
Yes. Okay. Next, Paige Lyons. John Hall. Oh, I'm sorry. You're next. Sorry. Nelson?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to talk about everybody's favorite subject, which is the police department. It's a thorn in everybody's side. I did finally get to have my meeting with the chief of police. It was a total and utter fiasco. She did not want to listen to anything. Every time I brought up a subject, she wanted to do nothing but argue. Mr. Richardson sat in on that meeting. He can vouch for it. It did not go any way pleasant, in any way, shape, or form. And when I brought up the fact of the police officers lying on a report, she didn't want to see anything, took the report, glanced at it, shoved it in a notebook. I don't want to deal with this, point blank. You can go with the sergeant and he'll take your sworn statement. We'll fill this out. We'll take care of it. And oh, by the way, there's somebody else that needs this room. There's somebody else that's reserved it. We need to get out of here. Funny thing is, after we left, that room stayed empty. So yet again, another lie from the police department. I get over to the police department. I was handed a police report. Here, fill it out, bring it back. So much for having the police take a sworn statement. That is how the police department like dealing with things. Do it yourself. So if they're doing this to me with Mr. Richardson sitting in the room, what are they doing to the general public when the general public comes and tries to do something? They need to realize who they work for. They work for the public, hence the name "public servant." They need to realize that they have, there are checks and balances in play. And it's about time that the city council do something about it. Yes, you have something going up, what, Thursday you just said? You guys need to crack down on the police. You need to put them in check because they are out of hand. When a chief of police will not even sit and listen. I had a meeting with this man. I had many, many things to go over. He took the time to sit and actually listen. I had just as many things to discuss with her. She didn't want to listen. She wanted to argue the whole entire time. I have had many meetings with many chief of polices over the years. This is the worst experience I have ever had. You need to do something.
Do you have any comment about the meeting?
No, I don't. Not at this time.
John Hall.
My name is John Hall of Hall Group Companies in Frost Spring. I hope to soon meet with the Albemarle Charlottesville Community Reentry Council to propose better OAR pre-trial services for those accused of crime. There is a lack of good communication and equity between OAR, the court, the lawyer often representing them, or as pro se defendants in general. As the accused are faced with the inequity of the criminal justice system, this results in a lack of understanding and good communication. Our court system becomes overburdened with very high caseloads. Jails have too many inmates. There is a simple solution. I propose recording the truth of the incident as police respond to a call. Police officers are furnished tape recorders purchased by our city. Text can be entered by smartphone for the accused and accuser at the scene of the alleged crime. The compliments, this complements the new Bill of Rights I'm working on with Charlene Green, head of human rights. People have time to collect themselves and police officers are respected and helped to enforce the law. Cool heads always prevail. Much money and court expense is saved. The truth promotes love and peace of mind, unity for all. With text and recording at the scene, copy to accused and accuser, a truth brief from the text and recording can be turned over to the state parole board, OAR, and/or the court by police. Freedom of information cost can be paid by the accused or accuser if they lose the copy provided at the scene of the alleged crime. It can be sent by email. At OAR, new paralegals, psychologists, and psychiatrists can be hired to expedite criminal justice reform with this new brief prepared, truth brief for all defendants facing court. I hope city manager Terry Richardson might consider integration of all these services in a new city hall complex. I believe the daily progress reported he is planning for the future. I would be delighted to work with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mason Pickett.
Mason Pickett, Albemarle County. Somebody's recently decided that they're going to let us know that 1619 is an important red-letter date in the slave community, the history of the slave community. I think a more interesting, important date, red-letter date, is today and the future. I think that there's a slave factory happening across the United States. How could that happen? Parents. Parents give their children, some parents, give their children really poor opportunities. They pick them up at the hospital, they come home to a terrible situation. By the time they get to kindergarten, they've seen violence, they've learned some words that might make a sailor think about it. Then they get in school. Parents don't go to PTAs. Parents don't observe if they're doing their homework. Parents don't know who they're running around with. Parents don't know where they are at all hours of the night. Lost my train of thought. Don't worry, I'll get it back. Parents would rather spend money on getting their nails done or getting a smartphone.
They're working three jobs.
Then taking the children to a bookstore and buying a book, or taking them to Richmond to a museum, or taking them to Washington and seeing all the things up there that are free except for getting up there and coming back. Now, they're not the only ones in this factory. Government plays a part in it, too. When I go to buy a car, if I can't pay full cash for it and I have to get a loan for it and I don't make the loan on the car, they take the car back. They get stuff from y'all and they get to keep it. So if you really want to go after the problem, you don't just want to do patchwork. The problem's not an easy thing to fix, but you got to want to do it. You got to get out there and call these parents for what they are: slave makers. Folks, nice day.
Rose Key.
Good evening.
Hello. How's everybody doing?
Doing okay.
Good. My name's Brooke Ray. I work with the International Rescue Committee. I'm also a member of the Charlottesville Food Justice Network. I'm stepping in for one of our Charlottesville food advocates, Tammy. Actually, because she's at a PTA meeting right now. I couldn't be here. But what I wanted to say.
Excuse me.
What I wanted to say is that, first of all, I'm here with a group of community food advocates, and we wanted to first say thanks to all of you again for passing the food equity initiative. We're really excited to report on that work over the last year on October 7th at the city council meeting. We're also here today, and I'm sorry to invite you to do more work, but I think it's fun work. It's a friendly challenge to get all of you to think about food equity from an experienced standing from an experienced standing point. In addition to building a community food advocates program, really to follow the direction of city council and Mayor Walker when we passed the Food Equity Initiative, which was to better engage the community in these problems and come up with community-based ideas about what food equity looks like. So this was an idea that came directly from the Advocates Project. So I'm going to let Rosa talk more about what that looks like.
I am Rosa Key. I'm from Charlottesville, Virginia. Here's the challenge guideline. The average Virginia SNAP coalition is three dollars and eighteen cents a day. You have to buy, you have to get three meals out of three dollars and eighteen cents. You have to get breakfast, lunch, and dinner. It's a dollar and six cent per meal. You cannot cheat. You cannot go out for lunch. You cannot buy coffee three dollars and six cent. You have to be honest about it. You have to write it down, everything that you eaten for the three dollars and eighteen cent a day. And you have to write it down and put it, we got a, we got a link to Food Justice. And you can go on there and write it down, what you ate for the three meals, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll email all of you and you can also sign up for the SNAP Challenge at seavillefoodjustice.org. And there are more details, but we'd encourage you to visit food banks and UACC and IRC markets as well. But, and we'll be joining you in this challenge, so, thank you.
Kida Mills.
Hello. I'm Kida Mills from the Food Justice Program. This is...
I'm Bimal Shetri. I represent IRC. At the IRC, we have many farmers growing food in neighborhoods across the, across Charlottesville. They grow this food and sell it, eat all at market. One of the IRC markets is held at Mickey Drive on every Thursday from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. All IRC markets offer SNAP dollars matching. This is just one resource that many community members used to get culturally approved produce in their home.
Another resource is Urban Agricultural Collective of Charlottesville.
Um, the microphone, please.
Another resource of Urban Agricultural Collective of Charlottesville. UACC is also growing food in public and subsidized housing communities in our city. They give this produce away free of charge. Another great program is Fresh Pharmacy, which is ran by a local food hub in collaboration of UVA Health System. They offer prescriptions of produce for people with chronic disease and diabetes.
In support of SNAP Challenge, we would like to present you with a list of resources that could help you navigate, navigate our food environment. This list includes over thirty programs and organizations that support access to healthy and nutritious food in our community. We also did some research on grocery stores. We have mapped those for you with some notes on the more affordable places to visit. I believe you have those maps on your table. Thank you.
Some of these resources are City School Yard, Garden, Trinity Bread and Roses, UACC, IRC, local food hubs, Loaves and Fishes, and many more. Also, you can go on www.seavillefoodjustice.org and sign up. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is, I'll just say this is similar to when Tanisha Hudson said that we needed to stay overnight in West Haven and I said that I, you know, already done that many of times. So, um, I have done SNAP for years, you know, trying to raise a family, so I don't need to do the challenge. But if you all want me to suffer through that, I promise I haven't forgotten. And work each day to make sure that the work we do at the city meets the need of people who are having to. And figuring out what policies we can put in place to make sure they don't continue. And if they do continue to have to, that it's done with integrity and that the individuals that I work with understand that the position that individuals are in. So I've done this, I keep my card as a reminder, so, you need to see that. And so that's what I wanted to share, but counselors who haven't, I think this is, it would be an interesting experience. All right. Robin Hoffman.
Hi, everybody, I'm Robin Hoffman. I'm from Charlottesville Community Media Center today. And so what does that mean? So, September twenty-first at ten AM to twelve PM at York Place, they're going to have the open house, swag, food, everything. So go there and find out what the center, or the media center, is like. It's next to Christians, behind the noodle cent, the noodle place. Anyway, so this, I broke my ankle in May. So I've been trying to figure out how, how I can get all these names on papers for petitions and things like that. And I want to share that with you. Because it's possible that we can all participate and, you know, find a passion and actually get people to sign up for it. So I did that, I did that, I went to all these events. I went to like a million events, but I only had two hours window and then I pulled my foot out. So I just wanted to know, it's possible, this is just one situation where I got all these names in four hours. Okay, so, these are the names of people on the downtown mall that want to participate in Charlottesville Public Access TV, which is now called Charlottesville Communication Media Center. It's not just TV. So you can also go there and participate, make a program for yourself or whatever. Anyway, they'll explain it to you on the open house. I did a program already to help with them engineer, you know, some of the logistics of the new equipment. Okay, so, but what I want to say is here's some ideas. I hope I'm making sense. Okay, here's, here's some ideas. So some people here were talking about food, okay? Food Nut Bombs helped me with my foot. I was like in an emergent situation, I was in a wheelchair for two months. So Food Nut Bombs came over to my house. Not only did they come over like I had a situation with, I needed a way to get the wheelchair out of the building, I mean, my house, okay. But anyway, so that, they could be a show. And then what about today, carbon footprint? What did you do in your house lately? Did you change LED lights? Did you do something, you know, where you can, you can show that your bill reduced from two hundred to sixty because you actually were proactive? You can make shows about anything, positive or negative if you need to. I mean, I think it's very therapeutic for me to be on TV, I don't know why. Okay, so now, who are climate kids? Climate kids, also, I, I got a whole bunch of papers for the climate action that's going to happen on Friday. So please participate with your town for the good things too, and, okay, bye.
Thank you. You had a couple more seconds, right? Tanisha Hudson.
Evening, Mayor Walker.
Good evening, ma'am.
And members. What I was going to initially talk about, I'm not going to talk about that right now. Since they voted on the statue and they got to stay, do y'all plan on voting to put something else up there? You know, to include others? Just wondering, since that was part of the discussion in the Blue Redman? Did we forget that?
We didn't forget.
Oh, y'all did?
You mean contextualizing?
Yes.
Face.
Adding to it.
Adding.
Black faces. Yeah, black history. Okay, so y'all working on that?
Well, this just happened the end of last week and I don't think the legal battle is necessarily over.
It's not over.
Yeah, it's not.
No, but we could start discussing. You know, we'd be discussing stuff three years in advance before we actually started doing the work. So we should probably just start discussing it, what we going to do. Anyway, Mr. Thomas that live on Forest Hill has been complaining that trash and people are parking in front of his house. You know, you live a couple doors down from your grandmother.
Thank you for telling everybody.
I just wanted to let him know. You know, he's been complaining. I'm sure she complained too, then again, she probably don't because they watch their parking space. But people have been parking over there, if we could, you know, possibly, like, work on that. And you guys should fund the CRB. And I just want to touch on what the gentleman said about the Charlottesville Police. I'll touch on it a little bit, but I'm not going to discuss what I initially wanted to discuss. I just think that we still haven't fully seen any type of accountability from this city. Some members of council, I'm not going to say all members of council, but some members of council, some members of the police department, it's not everybody, it's some of y'all, but one bad apple spoils a bunch. And until we start getting accountability that we deserve, because I ain't going to say that we need, we deserve it. I really don't think that you guys should anticipate on having any type of respect because y'all don't respect us. And so while we keep begging for, you know, y'all want to be respected, we want to be respected too, we not really going to get nowhere if y'all just can't even take accountability and y'all just fail to do that. And I think if you did that, you might get the respect that you deserve. You know what I'm saying? Like, respect is just earned and I feel like y'all don't, y'all missing that a little bit. Like, you gotta give it to get it. And y'all don't quite give it, you know what I'm saying? And usually I'm hyped up here, but see, y'all have been working my nerves, I had to take two trips from each other. So I'm trying to be calm and nice and figure out a way that we can move forward, but y'all got to take some type of accountability. And y'all three know who I'm talking.
Thank you. I'm Scott Byer.
Hi, do I still have to give my address? I'm not for real. Okay, Scott Byer, six eight five Ashcroft Mountain Road, Charlottesville, Virginia. Good evening, council. My name's Scott Byer. I'm an urban affairs analyst who writes for Forbes and a policy fellow for the Independent Institute. And I'm about to open up my own consultancy regarding urban policy. So I'm really interested in urban issues and I'm happy to be able to research them full-time. I was born and raised in Charlottesville, still live here, and would like to discuss some things that I've been researching and how they apply to Charlottesville. The main issue with American cities right now is the affordable housing crisis. Affordable, it, it's not only an issue in cities, but it has increasingly become an issue in suburban and rural America. But certain areas in America are solving affordable housing better than others. I would, I would distinguish them by using the term elastic and inelastic housing markets. Elastic metros are ones that grow quickly by population, but build lots of housing. That's why they're called elastic. Despite their growth, they've stabilized their home prices. Median home prices in elastic metros are generally around the national median. The four leading examples of elastic metros, metros are Houston, Dallas, Atlanta, and Phoenix. Then there are the inelastic metros. Despite fast population growth, they don't adequately expand housing supply. That's why they're called inelastic. Because of this, they have rapid home price inflation with medians that are often double, triple, or more the national median. The four leading examples of inelastic metros in the US are San Francisco, San Diego, Portland, and Boston. I'm here tonight to say that Metro Charlottesville, where I grew up and still care about, is increasingly reflecting an inelastic metro. Our housing growth is not keeping pace with job growth and population growth. The reason is political. We have restrictive zoning that prevents new supply from meeting demand. And that's the case both in the city and the county. If we don't change our zoning, Seaville will continue to have a home shortage. Prices will continue to rise. And our area will further reflect the inelastic metros that now have a full-blown housing affordability crisis. Thank you.
Did you write the report on Facebook about the Flint Hill development?
Yes, ma'am.
You're responsible, okay, thank you. Um, Rosia Parker.
Good afternoon. I'd like to speak on the CRB a little bit, that Charlottesville is trying to become an urban place. So I think it needs to be touched with urban information, like far as y'all having y'all's meeting with Fairfax. So I hope y'all really do take in deep consideration what they present as in y'all's decision of actually making this, the bylaws and the ordinance pass because, as you can see, we don't have a MOU with the chief of police. And to me, that seems like they want a weak board. And we're not weak people, the ones who've put it together, so I don't think that we should have a weak link in any area of that CRB. Also, there was a question asked too about the money that was left over in the budget for the initial CRB that was on there, if they could be paid what was in there. That has not been answered to that yet either. Then I want to go to housing. Wes, you sit on housing. Mr. Richardson, you've been helping me with housing. But if we're to be sitting on these boards in housing and people are bringing problems to the people who are sitting on the housing and nothing is not being done, I feel what's the use of sitting on the board of housing? To make it look good or just help with whatever else it is? And y'all have given money to Charlottesville Housing for redevelopment. Okay, that's only toward redevelopment. There has not been any money to remodify West Haven. West Haven was the first housing project that the city placed there for it not to be taken care of. One, I have been still living in conditions for a year and a half, I slept in a chair for ten months because housing didn't take care of my home. And instead of them taking care of the problem, they transferred me to another home, which is ten times worse than the home that I originally was in. It looks atrocious around there. Snakes and things are coming apart. I feel that if the city was to take over housing, I think that should be done if the city was the ones who put it there. I think the money should be taken back from the city to properly take care of the property because it don't seem like the housing itself is doing the job that it needs to be doing, far as the residents. And like I said, I'm continuously living in hazardous situations where it has damaged my mentalness, my emotions, and my skin. And this has been going on for almost two years. So I feel that, Mr. Richardson, I still say I thank you, Wes, I haven't heard anything back from you and it's been going on two months since the last meeting. But I just hope that the next time that people... But I just hope that the next time that people step in, being on city council, if you're gonna work for the people, make sure you're for the people and the color of your skin is not loyalty.
Okay, um, so I have a comment about, um, the, we've been having the conversation about redevelopment and modernization, um, which both of them take the resources and we need to make sure that the resources are allocated. CRHA has been under, not this current administration, but it has been under the, um, you know, the city government has been in control of it before and, um, the resources weren't allocated to it, which is why we are in the situation that we're in. I still think, and, um, I plan on saying it during this budget cycle, when I walked into my first meeting, the retreat of the year, I said we needed to do at minimum a fifty million dollar, um, bond for public housing redevelopment and to ask people to wait any longer, even if you're talking about investing dollars with modernization, because it hasn't been kept up and the conditions that they are in, every, there needs to be a plan, um, for all of the sites for redevelopment. I don't think that, um, modernization is going to, um, get a return that anyone's looking for, individuals who live there or in terms of, um, the investment on the dollar. So, it's gonna take, uh, you know, the willingness from the council that comes on board, the city administration, to make sure that that's a top priority and that we are not asking individuals who live in, um, our public housing units to wait any longer. And so, when we're having these conversations, um, I'm not at every commission, meeting for the redevelopment, um, commission, it's a challenge, um, but the meetings that I am at, I am making sure that I read the information and, um, you know, the issue is dollars and where do you get them from? And, um, I think we could get them, um, but I'm just one person, you know, so I'm just saying what I think, um, and what I have asked for, but I think that's, that's the conversation. I know there's been some concern about how, since West Haven was the first build, why wasn't it the first selected for, um, redevelopment? And I wasn't a part of those conversations, but I understand that line of thinking and as someone who has had family members who lived there, I understand and I probably would know that I would've been asking, um, the same thing. So, we are listening and we are having the conversations and I know when you're living, um, in conditions that are not healthy and are mentally and physically tasking, that it's hard, that while we are taking time to have these conversations and debate, that you're waiting. But, um, hopefully, we will stop debating and understand that it just needs to be done and just figure out solutions.
I don't think it's a matter of, uh, this is the housing authority rep and I think Ms. Parker is aware of this because she's been at the meetings. It's not a matter in regards of whether or not there's an appetite for us to do something specifically at West Haven or the other sites. To a certain extent, there's one, capacity. The housing authority only has the capacity to do certain amount of things at a certain time because they're limit staff. And then there's a great deal of community engagement that has to go on with this and if you wanna do it right, you can't just go and pick every site to say that, hey, you know, we wanna revamp, revitalize, modernize, and rebuild on all six of our public housing sites simultaneously. And I know that's not what some people are saying.
Oh, and that's not what I just said.
Literally what I was about to say is, I know that's not what some people are saying. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's not what everyone is saying, but I do think that for some people, that's the part that's missing, specifically in regards to talking about West Haven. There's a redevelopment committee that's been working, um, at length in regards to talking about what proper steps need to be taken. Them, that group, along with working with FAR, who was the designated, um, organization via HUD, to work with our residents, decided to come up with the plan after a great deal of community engagement with members of the public housing committee, advisors, consultants, and so forth, to choose the sites that they chose first. So, they're following a process. They've made a great deal of progress, in my opinion. And furthermore, just in my personal estimation, we've moved further along with public housing redevelopment than the city has ever seen. We literally have site plans, we're moving forward in terms of building. Anybody wants to come to the public housing, um, meetings, you can show up the fourth Mondays of every month at six o'clock, we're right in here. The redevelopment committee meets, um, every week or every other week, rather. I mean, there's a great deal of work being done and I don't think it's fair to say that, not saying this is what you're saying, Mayor Walker, but I think just for clarity, it's not fair to the people who've been literally putting hundreds of hours into trying to get this right, that because they didn't pick one specific site that some folks think should've went first, that nothing is being done.
No, that's not...
And I'm, so, so literally...
That's not what I'm saying.
And people can agree, people can agree and disagree, but I'm just literally saying that's...
But get with it, it's right next to the court bill.
Hold on, wait. Hold on, hold on, please.
The reason why I'm saying that is because, once the redevelopment started, it's left the other people that are still living in these houses.
So, he can comment?
I understand, I've been at these meetings with them. I was, I was an initial, you know, intern.
But if someone else wants to come up next and say it, just in keeping a line.
I'm not just saying about what is not being done with redevelopment, but what I'm saying, even if my personal issue that you know about, that I brought up in the housing meeting.
Okay, so Wes, do you have any further comments?
There's a lot of mold and a lot of stuff that is going on.
Hold on, please.
So, it's kinda hard, you know, I mean, yeah.
Just let him finish comment. Not yet, cuz he's, hold on, cuz I don't know if he's done, comment.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so are you?
I wasn't, but it's fine. Like, I respect Ms. Parker.
No, and for me, the comments that I was making about, is making sure that the most important component of it is the finances. And so, I'm talking to council, future councils, and the city administration. So, that's who I was directing. The individuals who now believe, based on what we passed in the budget last year, that progress is possible, um, they are moving and they are working around the clock to attempt to make some. So, we just need to make sure that the funding is there so that we can continue, um, continue the process.
Right, but in the meantime, what's the other people, you know, as far as like the mold, the asthma, and all these other conditions?
We understand.
In the house, you know, it's like, I'm at a critical condition right now where I can't wait long. I've been waiting one of two years. So, it's like almost still, even with this fight that I'm fighting, how much more longer would I have to wait in order for somebody from housing to actually...
And I think, and I think to that, so to that point, I don't, I don't like talking about specific individuals and I appreciate where you're coming from, Ms. Parker, but I do know for a fact, like, there, I mean, I'm probably one of the most visible persons in public housing, like, I've been there all the time. When individuals bring situations and/or complaints or recommendations to me, we do everything that we can to work with our housing authority, our director, the deputy director, and then staff and maintenance to address those issues. I follow up with those issues personally, which I think many people, I'm not gonna say just you, but many people know very well that I follow up with those issues personally and when it's communicated to me, that those situations have been addressed. Whether or not they've been solved or whether or not they've been addressed is one thing and then I follow up and ask whether or not they've been resolved, that's literally all that I, as one housing commissioner, can go by. If there's still issues specifically pertaining to you or anyone else for that matter of bothering around public housing, please let me know. You can send me an email, send me a text, give me a call. When I'm jogging around there, every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in the mornings, stop me, let me know. When y'all see me out in the afternoons or the evenings, let me know and I'll do my best. But that's literally all that we can do is our best. Lastly, but just, but just lastly, I think everyone needs to understand, specifically West Haven, but all of our public housing sites, these units are very old. They should've been demolished and revamped, remodeled, or modernized a long time ago. And unfortunately, we're having to deal with a lot of it now. That is, that's not an excuse in any shape, form, or fashion, but I do think that we all have to understand that because how old some of these units are, like, some of these units in West Haven, the parts, you can't even get them anymore because they're no longer made. But we still have to figure out how we make it work. I think we need to keep in, keep in mind that people are working diligently to try to make the best out of the situation that we can and public housing redevelopment is a long-term project. I wish we could fix all of them tomorrow, the same way in which we're trying to fix West, excuse me, same way we're trying to fix South First Street and Crescent Halls. Those are just the two sites that were picked first.
But from a transparency point of view, those sites were picked because of what is there.
That's, that's not why those sites were picked.
So, Councilor Hill, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge, I mean, I've heard from a number of sources this issue with the maintenance, so I understand where Ms. Parker is coming from and I also recognize that we can't do all of this at once, but I think there's a certain level of attention that's needed on every existing unit that's out there and there has been consistent feedback that that's been an issue. And that's not just in, just one specific, um, housing community, but throughout the system. And so, I just, I think that's something that definitely merits attention and it raises concerns for me and so I just, I feel like this maintenance piece is, and also just the number of units that are currently offline is a concern. And that includes Crescent Halls where we're trying to do a lot of moving around of people and if ten, so for example, if ten units are offline, it makes that even more steep challenge to try to allow for people to move into other units while these other units are redeveloped. And so, I think across the system, it's important to understand, I would like to have an answer on how many total units are truly not able to be lived in. Ms. Parker just described a situation where she had to move from one to another and that condition was even worse. Um, and, and why aren't some of these more simple maintenance concerns able to be addressed? Because those are everyday concerns that are coming up, I hear from residents in more than one community.
So, I know for a fact, right now, there's less than, I, I'm comfortable with saying there's less than fifteen units.
Ms. Carey.
Just for the public, just for the public's information, there's less than fifteen...
You can see how it's going on.
But, Ms. Carey, could, Ms. Carey?
Before Mr. Delly was born and he...
Ms. Carey.
I've been through it.
But we're just trying to have a discussion about what Ms. Parker brought up.
She needs to go down there for a week and live there. Just stay there like those people do.
But I think she just said that she...
She needs to do it, not say it.
But she just said that the maintenance needs to happen.
No, she needs to go down there physically and live in one of those apartments for a week. All y'all need to. You need to experience it.
But what I'm, okay.
Go down there, go a month.
So, excuse us, so, we're gonna move on?
Yeah, please move on.
No, 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 no.
So, wait a minute.
No one gets to dictate, no, but I don't think it's right though that someone else gets to dictate entirely.
No, I'm talking about, back to our discussion.
Back to our conversation.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I think that the, the maintenance piece...
Go down there, live in, live in.
Ms. Carey?
This is ridiculous.
Ms. Carey?
I don't go.
I just would like for you to let, let us finish the discussion.
Go to something else.
Okay. So, I think what we just, um, I'm confused right now. Lord.
She advocating for the second thing she's...
So, what she just said is that the maintenance needs to happen. Did y'all hear something different? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Walker.
She's not being transparent with the other two private...
But Tanisha, right now, but that's not the point at this moment.
And it's near your downtown mall.
Tanisha.
Tell the truth.
But Tanisha, that is not what I know to be the truth.
I know it's the truth.
Um, I can see why that, excuse me, I can see why that is the perception, but we can, we're gonna finish the conversation we were having. Okay, so are you...
Just to respond really briefly to Vice Mayor Hill, um, I'm comfortable with saying, I know that there's less than thirteen units that are offline right now.
In the whole CRHA system, including Crescent Hall.
Correct. And part of the reason, the units, the, so the units that are offline, they have major repair issues. So, for example, you will have some units that will need like an entire kitchen remodeling because the sinks and the plumbing requires like four or five thousand dollars worth of work. Those are the kind of units that are offline. Now, yeah, there are some others that may, you know, require some simple logistical work or some simple work and those are things that I know the maintenance staff is working on. But I think if, if we all have these concerns in regards to the individual specifics for the units, I think it may behoove us to look at bringing in the housing authority members to give us a report, maybe at an upcoming meeting. It doesn't have to be, obviously, tomorrow.
But I mean, I think we received this report before and we received it when we, um, did the section three, um, trial, right? So, there were units that they couldn't even repair based on how damaged and how much resources it would take. So, I, you know, beyond that, it's really having the discussion about what is, I mean, what is the time, what can be fixed, um, how much money that takes, what that looks like in terms of, um, you know, timing process, redevelopment timeline, whether that is going to be a slow process or whether we're gonna make the, make the investment, how long? And if that is going to be a drawn-out process, then the modernization and the dollars, then we're committing to maybe investing less but making sure those dollars are there. And I think that's the discussion and I think if the community hears that upfront, which we had some of those discussions during the last budget cycle, but it wasn't, you know, clear. And that will help some, but it, I may, you know, um, Councilor Bellamy, the conversations about, um, you know, what can be done and the timeframe that it's taking if, um, we can figure out how to make sure that there are more, you know, updates in terms of the repairs that need, need to be made. That may, that may...
Yeah, I can request, uh, from, at our upcoming housing authority meeting, if I'm not mistaken, on the thirtieth, uh, or, excuse me, next Monday, on the twenty-third, um, I can request that we, or that the housing authority then maybe provides like a one-sheeter or a two-sheeter with some of the questions I heard tonight. One, how many units are offline? What's maybe a cost estimate for the renovations that's needed, things of that nature. If council has any other questions, I can get those answers.
Some of the offline that you've described is a much deeper. I think that I would like to know what units are not occupied and why.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Can I speak? Oh, okay.
No, I already spoke. Okay.
That was perfect.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Dreyfus. I'm a community organizer with Leeley Justice Center and on the advisory council for the Public Housing Association of Residents. And I'm really glad to hear that these are the, the topics that you all are talking about because I really think that the urgency of public housing redevelopment has to be front and center and stopping, or at least slowing, displacement in our community has to also be a top priority. And I wanted to make a brief comment about a topic that's gonna be coming up more again, um, in the near future, which is form-based code, which doesn't address either of those and will, um, most likely result in quicker displacement of low-income people. And I urge you to put that on the back burner. Last week or the week before, the consultants were here in town and I went to the workshop that they did, um, from, these are the folks from the Form-Based Code Institute who are proponents of form-based code. And, um, one of the sessions was at Crescent Halls. I've talked to several people who were there who found it to be incredibly hard to understand. Um, and it is really complicated stuff. I don't, I don't even understand some of what they're talking about and I've been to more workshops about this than I care to think about. But the consultants said during the presentation that one of the likely results that they anticipate is increased property values, which means more displacement. And that is one of the reasons that the form-based code should not be happening. They said that the remedy to that is to, um, have comprehensive strategies in place to prevent displacement and to make sure that neighborhoods that are vulnerable are stabilized. We don't have those, but we're working towards those and, um, a consultant is going to be hired in the very near future that you all have been working on for about two years, who will work on a comprehensive housing strategy, rewriting the zoning code, and that's where a form-based code should be rolled in. We shouldn't be doing one option that will make the situation most likely very much worse, according to the people who are the proponents of this. I would also like to thank the mayor for what you said about the fifty million dollar bond. That's exactly where we need to head. We need more funding. The public, um, housing situation is really dire. The reason Crescent Halls was put on the first, um, as the first starting block was because most of the people in that building were living with very unhealthy, unsafe conditions. On the other sites, there are lots of people living with very unhealthy, unsafe conditions, but at Crescent Halls, it was the majority. So, that's why that building went first. The other thing, um, I would like to just mention is that the housing authority is finally hiring a maintenance supervisor and once again, that was all about money. They couldn't come up with the funds for that. Lastly, I just want to raise a really positive thing which is happening, which is that UVA does a community bridges race. This is the second annual and public housing, the Public Housing Association of Residents and three other affordable housing... Housing Association of Residents and three other affordable housing groups are going to be the beneficiaries of that race, it's on October twelfth, if people are interested in signing up, there's Team FAR, you can support FAR by signing up and joining the race. Thank you.
And the point that was left out in terms of First Street being the second, you're simultaneously with Crescent Halls, was because of the available land, um, from, you know, and being able to build and move people, and knock down and build, which is not available at, um, West Haven, but, that's, better communication will help with, you know, have some of these conversations upfront and early. I'll say from my, um, we had a form-based code meeting two, three weeks ago, and I was very alarmed, um, at the, um, data that we received in terms of the affordable housing units that would be produced in a twenty-year timeframe, it was only ninety, ninety-eight units, um, and, um, it, it is alarming, and I, for one, don't think that it should be done in isolation without the comprehensive plan and the housing strategy, um, either, so, that is hopefully where, um, that, and especially with the new, you know, city manager and team here, that we will be looking at whether it's, you know, voted on and implemented beforehand, or whether it's voted on with, and we had some of those, um, conversations when discussing, um, the work plan for the city manager.
Mayor Walker, can I please say something? Um, and again, thank you, Ms. Dreyfus, for your comments. Currently, the zoning in this area that's being considered for a form-based code does not build the one unit of affordable housing in that zoning, it's called Downtown Extended Mixed Use Corridor. So, you can have a nine-story mixed-use building, all office place, office space Class A, call it mixed-use because you have more structured parking than you need, and there's not one requirement for affordable housing in it, and that's what's going up on Garrett Street right now. So, that is what is causing inflation, that's what causes the prices to go up. When you look at, when you look at the fastest, the area that's growing the fastest rent levels, it's actually Tenth and Page.
Can she finish her comment?
So, I just, I just wanna say that the Downtown Extended zoning, right now, that does not provide any affordable housing units in, onsite, is, is there, and it's going to be inflating the land value, too.
That's what Crescent Halls does.
So, then, the, the form-based code does insist that in order to get additional height, the developer has to build affordable units onsite, and so, the example that they gave was just focusing on the sixteen acres of the X area, and they anticipated, for example, with a maximum build-out scenario, there could be two thousand units there, and of that two thousand, with the height bonus, there could be a hundred and forty-seven affordable units, and just in this category, sixty percent annual median income and below. That's a hundred and forty-seven more than, that, that currently wouldn't be built with the existing zoning, and given that you also have in partnership with that, uh, for-profit development contribution, is that you do have the Housing Authority developing more units, and rehabbing units, you do have the Piedmont Housing Alliance rehabbing units and building more units, three hundred more units at Friendship Court, and the, um, I know that on South First Street, there's about sixty-plus units, but I had a conversation with Dave Norris the other week, and he said that actually, there's more units being built or proposed by the Housing Authority. So, when you look at those numbers, and you look at what the build-out numbers are, using the form-based code, and adding the possibility of the hundred and forty-seven units, and they also came up with the, the strategy, the budget strategy, called that Tax and Credit Finance District, that could finance capturing that increased tax revenue from development, capture that revenue and put it into the housing fund, one, one scenario was to have ninety-nine vouchers, so it was a hundred and forty-seven onsite units with ninety-nine vouchers, paid for by those two thousand units on sixteen acres, that's two hundred and forty-six more units than you have now with current zoning. Current zoning will not do that, current budget strategy will not do that, and I just wanted to explain that, that that is, that is what is in this package, and that's what's being considered.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
No, I just did want to request that we did receive, if someone requested they could have their comments put into the public record, this afternoon, from a Highland Avenue resident, relative to the first reading of changes to the real estate tax relief program for elderly and/or disabled, and Ms. Thomas has that, I just wanted to ask if that's included.
You're gonna read it or not?
I, I think there was a preference to not have it read.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, we're closing the Community Matters, and we will break until eight, um, twenty.
I didn't assume that it would be a different one.
All right, I call this meeting back to order. Next up, we have the we have the review of the program performance for setting priorities for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG and Home Investment Partnerships, home funds for program year nineteen twenty, first of one reading.
Hi.
And if you just want to introduce yourself and just let people know what your position is and because you're also new to the city, we probably should have introduced you earlier.
Well, my name is Erin Attack, for those of you who I still haven't met, and I'm the new Grants Coordinator for the city. Thank you. So today's public hearing is going to serve two purposes. The first being to serve as a forum for public comment for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPR. And that covers the Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG grant, and the home programs. The second purpose is to have council set priorities for the CDBG home funds for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. The goals and priorities that are determined as a result of the public hearing today will serve as the framework for funding recommendations made by the CDBG and Home Task Force. And that funding is made available by HUD after July twenty twenty. Right now, we're not too certain as to how much funding the city will receive next year. However, we can estimate based on previous year's trends to what the program year funding will be. Given this, the city can expect to receive about three hundred ninety-three thousand and one hundred fifty-two dollars in CDBG funds and about seventy-three thousand six hundred and three dollars in home funds. And this is the city allocation of that. And then its counterpart is the Home Consortium entitlement, which will result to about six hundred twenty-four thousand and thirteen dollars. So first off, I'm going to go over the CAPR performance highlights, and this is again FY eighteen nineteen. So CDBG projects benefited one hundred seventy-two people. The projects included technical assistance for microenterprises and entrepreneurs, reentry services, childcare scholarships, and access to quality childcare and workforce development. Of the one hundred seventy-two beneficiaries, ninety-one was extremely low income. Nine percent were low income, point six percent were moderate income. And of the one hundred seventy-two beneficiaries, sixty-nine percent were minorities. It's also important to note that economic development projects will have successes and growths far after FY eighteen. Some of these infrastructure improvements have been completed within the Belmont Neighborhood Project. However, project outcomes cannot be reported in the CAPR until the project is fully complete. So if they're not fully complete, they're going to go on the FY nineteen twenty CAPR. On the home side of things, the city completed two down payment assistance projects compared to the goal of eight. Regionwide with the Home Consortium, there were two new rental units and twelve homeowner rehab projects for an overall total of sixteen units. So those sixteen units become the sixteen beneficiaries. Thirty-seven point five percent of those sixteen beneficiaries were extremely low income, so that's zero to thirty percent AMI. Sixty-two point five percent were low income, so that's less than eighty percent AMI. And then of the sixteen, fifty-six percent of the home beneficiaries were minorities. All comments made today during the public comment period will be reported in the city's submission for the CAPR, and that's at the end of this month. Currently, the full document is located on the city's website and on the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission site. And the link has been provided to you guys in the council agenda materials. Second item on the list, we'll discuss the CDBG and Home priorities for FY twenty twenty-one. So that's the upcoming year. Council will be asked to determine priorities for the CDBG and Home Program for twenty twenty-one, F-led program year. And then council will confirm the priority neighborhood, determine if CDBG funds should be set aside for economic development and housing projects, determine the percentage of funds that should be allocated for public service projects and admin and planning. And at any additional guidelines, council may see fit as to how funds should be spent. Overall, staff recommends that the council move forward with the following priorities. We recommend that council approve the fifteen percent maximum allocation allowed for public service projects and approving the twenty percent maximum allocation for admin and planning. Public service funds will remain citywide. This means that nonprofit partners are made aware of priority neighborhood, of the priority neighborhood, and are encouraged to recruit beneficiaries from that area. In addition, we ask council to prioritize forty-five thousand dollars to be set aside for economic development activities. And the remaining estimated CDBG budget, which will bring us to about one hundred fifty thousand, will go towards the priority neighborhood funding. So right now, we have Belmont and Ridge Street as the next priority neighborhood in rotation. As approved previously by city council on the May sixth council meeting, the discussion had then was to allocate Belmont's, or allocate last year's funding to Belmont Priority Neighborhood for the Franklin Street project, and then this year's funds are to be allocated to Ridge Street. And then any public service, housing, and economic development activity must meet the goals and recommendations of the Growing Opportunities Report in addition to the CAPR. For home funds, if there are any program income or reprogramming available, those funds are to go towards housing activities to support down payment assistance and homeowner rehab. All the priorities I just listed are also compliant with the eighteen twenty-two consolidated plan. There is some community engagement involved with CDBG and Home. Today's public hearing marks the beginning of the community engagement process for this year. And aside from today, the CDBG and Home Task Force will meet this winter to review housing and public service projects and will make recommendations to council for funding. The city's Strategic Action Team, the SAT, will also review economic development applications alongside with the CDBG and Home Task Force. The Belmont Task Force was formed and made recommendations that could use all funding available. Funding is allocated for the Ridge Street Committee to gather and provide recommendations towards projects in the priority neighborhood. In addition, notice of the public hearing for the initial recommendation and notice of the public comment period for the CAPR was advertised in the newspaper, and that went on from August thirtieth to September thirteenth, to last Friday. Approval of this agenda item aligns with the Economic Sustainability Quality Housing Opportunities for All Priority. Home funds will require an additional twenty-five percent local match from the city as part of the grant requirement. And in previous years, this funding came from the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. So there will be no impact from the general fund on the CDBG side. Overall, these are the recommendations and program updates, and you can find them on the second to last page of the council packet you guys have provided. Myself and other staff members from Neighborhood Development Services are here today to answer any of your questions. But that's all I have for you guys. Thank you.
I just had a quick one just around. Remember that we had kind of been alternating years, but at one point I thought we were talking about maybe doing two back-to-back because we wanted to fully fund a larger project. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding like the timeline of all that.
So Belmont Street has had the two, the first two years?
So it's already, that's done? Now we're already into this third year?
So now we're on the third year.
And because they are rotating, and then with the last two years will be Ridge Street. Okay.
And I just had some questions about, you know, the, under the, on page one, under discussion, it would be helpful for me if maybe in the, you know, future where we get the percentages, if we can break, instead of saying just sixty-nine percent minorities, if we can break that down into actually who was served and then link that to the percentages of extremely low income, low income, moderate income. I would like to see that just broken down a little bit. I have some questions. Should I wait till after the public? So the two down payment assistance versus eight, do we know why it was only two?
Those were the only applications that we had.
Okay, so it wasn't a greater need.
The funding remains there, and our partners there still have the ability to use that funding.
The fifty thousand dollars decrease towards the priority neighborhood from two hundred thousand to one fifty, is that based on shifting the money somewhere else? Is there not a need for the two hundred thousand? And you needed an extra fifty thousand, or did you only need one fifty?
So we noticed that recently, since the nineteen nineties apparently, the total grant funding amount has decreased. However, the allocation for the priority neighborhood itself remained the same. And that now takes up more than fifty percent of the grant allocation. So it makes sense to lower the priority neighborhood allocation amounts by that fifty thousand and allocate that fifty thousand towards the other programs that have been requesting for additional funds but haven't been getting it just because the priority neighborhood was taking up so much of that percentage breakdown, if that makes sense.
I'll just add a little bit to it. We have spending timeless deadlines that must occur with this funding, and we find that the neighborhood priority projects do take a little bit more time than some of the other projects do in order to, for the neighborhood to get projects together and for all of the things to come to fruition. And so we found that we've hit up on that timeless deadline a bit too much with the amount of funding that we still get from HUD for this grant. And so that's why we're recommending a decrease in the neighborhood funding to allow for more of the allocation to go to the citywide programs that are more competitive at this point.
And for the, there's an ask for the forty-five thousand dollars again for the economic development funding. So the twelve thousand that was spent last year, was that the same, it was just based on applicants?
Correct. There were, there was only one recipient that the SAT group recommended to council last year, though the money was available if there had been more applicants for that category. So we just felt it made sense to allow that to still be allowable. And if there aren't applications in that category, there is the opportunity for it to be used in one of the other categories, the housing category or infrastructure.
And the task force, is that the same task force, or will new members be appointed?
There'll be new members appointed. There were two or three members, I believe, that carried over. And right now, there's an advertisement out for a number of slots for the task force. And so councillors, if you have any recommendations for individuals that we should talk with concerning that, we can let you know the neighborhoods that need task force members, and you all may know some individuals that we can reach out to and see if they're interested.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful if you could send us the list, so we could do that.
We have appointed some new members since last year's cycle.
Yeah, I didn't know if we, based on what we were voting on today, if that would be the same, some of the same members from there, or would we be, would new members be appointed? So that's what I'm asking. And the only other thing was just the advertisement for to let the public know that the comment period, if we can figure out how to make that just a more robust process. I know we do a lot of work to make sure that people, you know, have the information, and then we may not always get the amount of feedback that for the work we put in. But I think this is important to make sure that we do. All right.
I have a few questions, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation, and it was a really clear staff memo. Thank you. I'm not sure what is meant by I'm not sure what is meant by, under the, it's under the CDBG Activities Program Your Table, and it says, "Enhance and improve access to neighborhood amenities." The goal was 1,000 persons assisted, and then the actual zero? That, I guess that's page 136 of 166. I don't know what number, what page yours it would be.
So this.
Yes, yeah, second page.
So this is part of the priority neighborhood project, just because it is still going on, and it hasn't been completed yet, that's why that number is a zero.
So, so it's just more parks, more, when you say access to neighborhood amenities, what does that really mean?
Yeah, so right now, we have the 10th and Page Park, that's under completion.
Okay, got it.
Getting ready to be completed.
So when that's completed, that number will go up?
Right.
Got it. And then, we, council got today a statement from the Public Housing Association of Residents, and it, and I, so my question is, and they, they wanted to have two areas to make a priority, that the redevelopment of public housing become a priority, and that the, using funds to bolster the efforts of the Section 3 housing program, employment program through CRHA in conjunction with the city's growing opportunity programs, that that could be a priority. So my question is, does anything in this resolution that's been drafted preclude that designation or giving those monies to the housing authority, and for those two purposes, for redevelopment of public housing and for Section 3 workforce development? Is there anything that prevents us from using this CDBG and home funds for that?
We talked about.
Not at all. I mean, in fact, we would anticipate applications based on the fact that FAR has, has put forth a statement. So you all have, the, the priority areas in here are broad enough that they could encompass the areas that are noted in CRHA's, FAR's letter here, as well as, you know, those are things that, that can be added. So yes, to your question, that it doesn't preclude anything. May I have something to add?
I think, I think Ms. Lee has already answered the question, because, good evening, councilors. This, CRHA neighborhoods are within the designated area, so they can equally apply for the funding along with other potential applicants seeking the money.
So I will say that they applied for funding last year, correct? Didn't they submit a proposal? Yeah. And so I think that would be part of the discussion, is how to, you know, how the, I brought this up the last time, about the ranking and how projects are selected, you know, by the, by the committee, was some of the concern that I expressed.
Well, I was just wondering if we added any language to the resolution, like, when you talk about priorities having access to affordable housing, but say, including but not limited to low-income housing redevelopment? And that when you talk about workforce development, you could add, including but not limited to efforts to bolster Section 3 training opportunities and partnerships with the city's GO programs. I mean, would that hurt? But it would also kind of underscore the importance.
It's not gonna hurt, provided it doesn't designate, you know, any single person as getting the funding.
So it just has to be a fair application process?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you. We can talk about that later, whether we, but either way, it doesn't matter, it's, we just need to make it fair. Right? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak? Do I have a sheet? Oh, you have to. Olivia was on the sheet. Okay. All right. I didn't have a sheet in front of me. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Don Gather's, city resident here tonight, speaking on behalf of FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. And I believe that you all should have all gotten an email on this earlier this evening. I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. FAR and the federal government have long held that CDBG slash home funds can and should be used for public housing neighborhoods. Redevelopment is proceeding at South First Street and Crescent Halls, both of which fall in the newly, newly targeted priority neighborhood of Ridge Street, both fall in the strategic investment area, the SIA. Both the priority neighborhood and the SIA are highlighted recipients of CDBG and home funds. FAR supports the use of these funds to support CRHA's efforts towards redevelopment and redevelopment infrastructure. We understand that it's not a lot of money, however, the task force should consider public housing redevelopment when evaluating proposals. Under economic development, FAR supports the use of CDBG funds to bolster efforts on, towards Section 3 training opportunities and implementing CRHA Section 3 plan full throttle. This could be in the form of support of GO programs specifically targeted to Section 3 contractors involved in work on CRHA development and redevelopment projects, or in supporting CRH, CRHA Section 3 programming in other ways. For bricks and mortar, all considerations should be given to use of CDBG or home funds to support either redevelopment projects or support capital needs of CRHA to make more immediate improvements as they are underfunded from HUD. Tonight, the council should consider revising the language in the resolution to, to state, reference CRHA affordable housing under priorities. Economic development should reference CRHA Section 3 and reference CRHA property when designated Ridge, when designating Ridge Street as a priority neighborhood. Moving forward, we would ask that council would direct staff in the CDBG task force and Priority Neighborhood Task Force to consider proposals that directly or indirectly support public housing redevelopment. And also to coordinate with CRHA to identify potential uses of CDBG or home funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Emily Dreyfus, Legally Justice Center organizer and FAR Advisory Council. And I would agree with everything Mr. Gather's just presented, and add one thing that hasn't been addressed, which is the services budget for CDBG funding, which also, I think, needs to prioritize public housing residents, especially resident involvement in redevelopment. And while I agree that the language doesn't preclude CRHA and FAR from applying for these funds, they don't prioritize public housing residents. So I really think a tweak to the resolution would help make sure that these grants prioritize some of the most, the people who need this funding and need to benefit the most. Thank you.
Now I would just ask Mr. Blair, is that even, if it's possible? If you want to look at that and let us know.
We could certainly put in some language now. I don't think, again, that you can ultimately during an application process, frame the resolution so that one group must be chosen.
Yeah.
At the expense of all others. But we could certainly look at what Ms. Galvin had, and look at adjusting that a bit, when, when you all are ready to adopt the resolution.
Olivia Gabay, city resident.
I also just wanted to speak in favor of prioritizing explicitly the redevelopment of public housing and funding the needs of those who are clearly in the most urgent need. As we heard earlier, this is something that is happening quickly, and if there are funds for it, I think it should be a top priority of redeveloping public housing and investing in people who live in those communities and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? Okay. So we're gonna close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
It's the first of two readings, right?
Um, no. That's one.
Mayor Walker, I'd be willing to make a motion to pass the resolution of council priorities for CDBG and home funds FY 2021 with the language that I read earlier. And that, that could be the first motion out there. Just to reiterate, that would be that resolution that's in our packet, but under the first bullet, after the phrase affordable housing, comma, there'd be a parentheses, including but not limited to low-income housing redevelopment. And then after workforce development, there'd be in parentheses, including but not limited to efforts to bolster Section 3 training opportunities and partnerships with the city's GO programs. Those would be two amendments to this resolution, which I don't think runs afoul of showing favoritism, it's just kind of underscoring a category.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd second that motion.
Staff, are there any questions? No? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Please vote.
I can keep this to you.
It's five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome. Next, we have an ordinance, yeah, rent, rental relief for elderly and disabled, first of two readings.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. Got two items on the agenda. The first one is the, kind of.
Speaking of that makes me nervous, I'm dropping stuff.
I do that to everybody now. We're closing the loop on some tweaks that you all agreed to with respect to the rent relief program. Back during the budget season, we were going to raise the threshold, or raise the amount of rent that we could use in calculating relief, according to the relief formula, and then we were gonna create a, sort of a top-end limit of $1,500 per year, which we, we already kind of have a de facto $1,500 limit on it, due to the fact that the, the max rent allowed is 6,000. So this would just kind of be holding steady. So I, I don't, I think we covered a lot of that ground back during the budget cycle, so if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them. This is just with respect to the rent program.
The only question I had in both of these was just your concern about, and it's in here somewhere, I had a note, but it was concern about if the elderly and disabled members of the community switched over to CHAP.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And the benefit that they receive with trash stickers?
Yeah, I can address that. That was in the second item, if you want me to.
Okay.
I can go ahead and tackle them both now.
Oh, should I read it? Or could we do both, or do we have to wait?
I mean, you can do both at the same time.
Okay, so we're also doing the changes to real estate tax relief program for the elderly and disabled, first of two readings.
Yep. And again, back during the budget cycle, it was agreed to, to raise the income threshold on that from 50,000 to 55,000, to keep pace with the CHAP program, which has already been authorized. So that's one of the pieces in here. But during the budget discussion, you all increased the benefit for the CHAP program fairly significantly. And so what that is going to do is, we're gonna see a lot of folks who are in the elderly and disabled program is no longer a better deal for them, and so we're afraid that they're going to leave the elderly and disabled program to go to the CHAP program. But there are some drawbacks to that. Number one, they wouldn't qualify for free trash stickers. Also, the CHAP program, you're supposed to pay the first half, and so that's gonna be a difficulty for a lot of our elderly and disabled people who would normally, you know, just, just go in the, in the real estate program. So to alleviate that, we're proposing sort of making the benefit that exists in the real estate program the same as the benefit in the CHAP program. So to, to kind of keep those people from leaving to go to CHAP. That way, the elderly and disabled folks can keep their trash stickers, you know, they get whatever the best deal for them is, under either program, they're gonna be able to get that by staying where they are. They're not gonna have to pay their, their first half tax bill. It's also gonna be a lot easier for us to administer, because we're not gonna be, you know, we're not gonna have this mass exodus to the CHAP program, which, you know, just kind of comes at one point in the year. Right now, the three programs that we administer staggered, you know, fairly well over the year, and so we feel like we handle them pretty well.
And that was one of the discussions that we had about even with CHAP, if we could change the cycle, but you thought that would be too cumbersome.
Yeah.
So, but it will work with keeping it, because this program is already administered that way.
Yeah.
So you're just saying to keep it aligned, but the dollars amount will change.
Exactly right. There was another point I was gonna make, but I can't make it. I can't remember, so if you don't ask, it's not important.
No, we want to hear. You, that was your second point.
I can't remember. I, I do, I do know that the trash stickers, the administration is gonna be a lot simpler for us, and, and the treasurer would agree with that, too, because with the CHAP program, if folks can't pay the first half, they have to apply to get into a payment plan, which is, you know, more work for the treasurer's office as well. So this would prevent that. And I, I believe you guys were gonna ask about the, the max income threshold?
Yeah, and I was just gonna, obviously, earlier, I just had asked if we could read the full letter, like, sorry, have that put into our public record. I'm just gonna do a couple highlights from it, because I do think it really speaks to some things that I've heard consistently for at least the last two years. You know, since 1998, Charlottesville Housing Affordability Program was first implemented, the upper limit for qualifying income was raised once, which was this last year, from 50 to 55,000. While that 10% increase may look generous, it does not account for the increase in the cost of living over the past 21 years, or the reduced purchase power of the dollar, or the increase in property tax assessment since the turn of the century. Their example here is they are homeowners since 2002, now over 70 and fixed income, in the same dwelling since 2003. Sess value from 2004 to 2019 has gone from 239,000 to 418,600. And looking at just the value of just like their taxes going, just even from 2015 to 2019 alone, are 3,070 to 4,077 dollars. And so I know that we discussed a sum during the budget cycle, and we have made inches, we've taken an incremental step. I would just like, in the future, I realize we're now just kind of trying to tidy up where we were, have something that's more pegged to those increases. Obviously, we have a COLA, we only do with our own budget, based on the cost of living. We really should be looking at these income thresholds in the same way, and have it be more dynamic and less static.
And as I present these each year, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I don't know that there was much interest in doing that in the past. I'm happy to kind of present to you sort of what an adjustment would look like on a year-to-year basis. The CHAP program is actually pegged to the Virginia Housing Redevelopment Authority's home, home loan program, which is about $90,000 right now. And so I'm, we're keeping an eye on that. As that changes, I'll, I'll make you guys aware of it. I, I firmly believe that if you adjust CHAP, you should also adjust the real estate tax relief program, so that they would go, you know, hand in hand. I'm, I'm happy to bring those things up for you guys to discuss, but ultimately, it's up to you guys.
And we had this in the budget to go up to 65,000.
Originally, yeah.
Yes, and so that was, I mean, your face. I hope we got a camera moment for that, because I want to come back to it. So.
This one's mine.
Anyway, we voted to keep it at 55, so that was one of the discussions that when we worked on this, that the limits were up to 65,000. And this year, after we get the numbers, and we have our robust discussion, and I'm already working on my proposal.
Oh, Lord.
That we can see where we go next, but hopefully, we'll increase it.
Okay.
I love working with, I love working with Todd on this.
I'm happy to help. The one other thing, we're making a slight tweak to the language in the real estate tax relief program. Currently, there's a, a requirement that applicants have a notarized affidavit in order to apply, and that's a hardship.
That's a fair bet.
We have a lot of folks who are, you know, in, you know, who are disabled, who can't get in, or who are infirm. The state code allows just a, a statement, so we'd like to switch to that.
So it'd be similar to check the box as the CHAP and just sign that you?
Just sign it, yeah. We don't require an, a notarized affidavit for CHAP, so I don't know why we should for the other.
Okay. This is great. So we have no vote on both. If there's no further discussion, then if we can move both items, three and four, to the consent agenda?
Thank you all.
Just a quick question since you're here, how?
How's it coming in, how will the applicant, I'll have to let you know.
Okay.
I mean, right now, um, CHAP just ended, so we've got some preliminary numbers, I can let you know, I'll, I'll take a look tomorrow.
And we had fun doing our radio tour.
Yes, we did.
We did a great job together, so, you didn't catch it?
I think, I think I have a link on Facebook soon.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, um. You need a moment, you need a break. Next, we have an ordinance amending and reenacting City Code, Chapter 18, Article 3, Special Events, third reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you recall, we had a first reading July 1st, then a second reading of these proposed changes August 5th. There was a lot of public comment during that time. Since that time, and I preface this by stating, I know that, that changes I make certainly aren't going to satisfy everybody, but I have tried since that time to meet with members of the public, as well as look at some of the emails that have come into council. Since the August 5th meeting, there have been six changes that are highlighted in the memorandum before you, but did want to go over a couple of the larger changes. First, I know there's been a lot of discussion about juveniles who might organize, and part of the juvenile question was, well, you know, the permitting requirement. What you will see is in Section 18-23, before there would be a civil penalty assessed against anyone, not just a juvenile, but anyone, we've provided for a provision for a warning. Another provision that we've looked at is the property damage insurance policy, a million dollars. And what we have done is basically applied that no longer to all demonstrations, but only to demonstrations that require a street closure, which is required by state law, or if there's going to be an actual structure used. And by structure, they're defined in the regu, the special events regulations. And the last one, again, there's six, but I did want to highlight just a few of them. I know Mr. Fogel had highlighted when he talked to you earlier about the idea of having a Coke bottle or glass bottles, and you'll see in the prohibited items section, glass bottles are no longer prohibited, but they would fall under Section 8, which are balloons, or bottles, or any other containers filled with any flammable biohazard or other noxious matter. But happy to take any questions from the council?
All right, anymore? No? Okay.
Thank you for your work on this.
I've got one, Madam Mayor. This may be more just a communication to the public issue. When the City Manager and I met last week, there was the, we talked about just this complication, which is the memorandum, the, the procedure, the memorandum that defines a lot of these terms is a separate document from the ordinance. And it's, and it's confusing to the public that you have two different moving, or two different parts.
Sure.
And I would, it's like administratively, I think that would be a good way to integrate them, so that the public, because it was very, you could understand why the public is confused if the part of the code that says, well, there's this exception, that if it happens within 48 hours of a newsworthy event, it's not regulated at all, but that's in a other memorandum. So is there a way that we can solve that problem by just conveying to the public, these two things work together? Here's what, here's how we regulate these events, here's a little bit of narrative history as opposed to the, what's, because it is.
And that's the conversation we had today.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we, we're going to look at that, how to make this probably on the website, a little more understandable, that there's the ordinance, but then there are also the regulations that would apply.
Okay, I think that that would be a great idea. And I think, and one other question I have, very nitpicky, is, and I appreciate all this so much, and it seems very sensitive, and really trying to hear the concerns that are out there. So on this, one about the.
What page is that?
And I should have my reading. It was, oh, the warnings, this would be 1823, the end. Should, so I just wonder about, so when feasible, except in exigent circumstances, a warning shall be issued. It seems like it would be more clean to just say a warning may be, because that puts a lot of pressure on determining feasibility, and you've got two conditions there, feasibility and exigent circum, or. It seems like you would just give the, give, like, you can give warnings for lots of things, parking tickets, speeding tickets. I mean, there's a lot of latitude that's given to, and I wonder whether I could say, if there's a way of having it be a warning may be issued, because it seems conflictual to have shall be, but then a feasibility exception.
Well, that can be, but, but, and, and that's obviously a council decision, but the shall be is, is sort of, you know, it, to apply it, it would be when feasible, except in exigent circumstances, a warning shall be issued. So it, what that's really saying is so long as it's feasible, we can, we, the police department or city will issue a warning, except if there is some circumstance that makes a warning impossible, or just not, maybe not impossible, but, but just illogical.
Right, it's, it's the default, it's not at all optional.
Right.
But what if you had some group that was intent on violating these, and they were only going to do it once, and they were, they were doing it with a malign purpose, and then they said, you have to issue a warning, and they very artfully got around these limitations the same way that we saw a lot of these people do before, where they artfully figured out a way to frame things as only defensive, and they figured out a way around the city's defenses. And I just, if it's mandated that you have to do a warning unless you kind of, you know, overtly go over this feasibility, this, this barrier, I just wonder whether we should say a warning may be issued. But, you know, you could enforce the, the rule that we have, but then.
Right, but I do say, I, I do think the except in exigent circumstances is there. If, for instance, you know, you know, the, the possibility of, like you said, just a group that out of nowhere came, and certainly, I, you know, I had conduct that just made a warning next to impossible to give, or. And again, it's the default rule, is you will give a warning, the way it's, it's worded. But again, that's council's.
Yeah, I, I would make an argue for having it be may rather than shall, but I can see why it would be shall. But it would, it basically is making the expectation be that the, that the prohibition is, is pending always. So it, it always means that a warning is the default, and it would give somebody a hook to say, well, you're, this, I don't, I don't agree with your definition of exigent. I don't agree, but if it said may, then it gives more discretion to, to the police in giving a warning. That would be my argument for having there be latitude. And it would still protect the groups that, that we're concerned about.
I see both sides of it, but. I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion. But you two are lawyers, and I'm not, so.
Mr. Richardson, Dr. Richardson, do you have any opinion on it?
I don't.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
I'm open to agreeing with Council Sigler.
You want to change it to may?
Sure.
Is there, we need a motion to amend it.
Oh, I guess, so I would make a motion, thank you, Dr. Olmey. So a motion to amend this to change the word shall at the end of 1823 to May 2nd.
Mr. Blair, do you have concerns with this?
Yeah, I have a question, if I can get it out. In terms of the discretion that was just discussed, that's been part of the conversation around what, you know, what some of the issues are with the, using that, instead of making it part of the process.
Right. And, and that's, again, that, that's exactly, there, there have been a lot of questions. You know, I think concerning this, I think some of the questions that have been risen are content neutrality. You know, if you make a, a rule a may rather than a shall, or, or certain discretionary aspects of it, that, where shall, the officer is going to issue the warning unless, again, there's some sort of circumstance that makes that impractical. And, and the word shall does, does limit officer discretion.
Okay.
And my, my, I guess my, and I, I see both sides, and the way that you could play this out. And I also understand where this is coming in terms of the concerns. I guess I'm trying to think about this from the perspective of a malign actor who is seeking to find vulnerabilities in the city's system, as we've seen repeatedly. And it's hard, because we're always weighing, dealing with a malign actor against dealing with those who really want to be heard and be, have expressed their civil liberties for all kinds of purposes that we generally think are really good ones, so that this, it's a balancing act. But I, I am, I guess my final argument would be, I'm concerned about basically making this not apply by default unless you can prove that there are exigent circumstances, whatever that means, and that it's feasible and requiring there to be a warning. So, but I see, Mr. Blair, where you're coming from, and I understand why we've gotten this point, but I still would argue that it would give us more ability to protect ourselves going forward.
Okay, so, is there a motion?
So just a point of order, then, so procedurally, then we could vote on the amendment?
Right. Then it could lose.
And then it could lose, but then we can vote for the.
And, and I will support this, if this amendment is, does not win, then I'll support the whole thing.
Okay.
And I'd just like to say one thing too, because I know some question was raised about where, do you find it on our website? If you go to our website, you go to I want to, then apply for, then a special event permits, and then on that page, you will see the special events regulations, as well as the special events application.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so there's a motion and a second. All right, any other questions? Please vote. So it carries, oh, no.
No, fails, fails.
Yep, fails, that's what, it was coming. And so is there a motion?
So, Madam Walker, I move to adopt the ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 18, Parks and Recreation, Article 3, permits for special events and demonstrations of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, 1990, as amended.
Second.
Okay. And just for.
Easy, easy text.
My vote is consistent, as it has been since these changes, you know, have taken place, but I will acknowledge publicly that this is a better version than we've had in place, and that the work being done to make, you know, this a less intense ordinance, I do understand.
And I just, real quick comment that, Madam Walker, is that I, I did go back and reread the Hafey report, and it was, it was very important for me to do that, just to understand the importance of making these changes. And I want to thank Mr. Blair for being very thorough in writing, making sure he dealt with the open flame. That was a big issue two and a half years ago. And then, you know, the perennial problem, of course, is getting sane or gun control, and that's going to be something that we're going to be applying once again in the General Assembly. But I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged your hard work and appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. So, please vote. Okay. And that carries four to one. Next, we have a report, Public Comfort Stations for Downtown.
Paul, do that report for the comfort stations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm just here to update you on the progress we've made on identifying location for some comfort stations, given the concerns with the public access to restroom facilities. I just wanted to be noted that there has been difficulty finding a suitable location to cite anything such as a trailer or something that's portable of that nature. The one site that we did land on was the Parks and Rec First Street South location adjacent to the city market. There's a fenced-in area there. We recommend having the fence altered and putting two ADA compliant portable restrooms in that location. Give it a trial period, see how things work, see if there's any issues with nuisance behavior, or certainly, we're concerned about having any kind of negative impact on, on having something open all night. But having the fenced area open to the public, it's two blocks off of the mall on the south end, that should provide an opportunity for anybody that is having an issue to find a way to that location. And I was just looking for some input.
So there is no location on the mall?
Currently, no, there's, there are issues with utilities, trying to get a, a small trailer on the mall. If you talk to Portageon, if you want to speak to the business owners, nobody wants that out in front of their, you know, their location. The city owns very little property, really, it's right away on Main Street and off of Main Street. It's just a few parcels we have that are currently surface lots for storage.
Madam Walker, I, well, years ago, when this came up, there was an effort made to investigate, I believe it was the Portland Portable John, that actually was made to look more like a little house. And the other discussions that were had was that the Haven might be willing to have that be cited on their property, and it is closer to the mall, and it actually is also affiliated with a, as a, an organization that's already working with the homeless, so that the, the population would learn right away where it is. So that, those are just two items that I wanted to bring to people's attention, because, you know, it, it was a more expensive piece, but I believe we actually put money in the budget for it at one point, and just never bought it. But it was from Portland, and, and it was, it was a more attractive than a Portageon, so it had, it gave more dignity to the whole process.
That's a Portland Louvre?
Yeah, that's, that's right, that's what it was.
But it sounded like right now that this, this portable piece is just for a pilot basis, then to determine what then a more permanent.
Yeah, I believe some of the concern is around vandalism and illicit activity, things of that, that nature. And so, you know, if we use this as a pilot, and you're talking about two portlets that don't cost that much money, if there was something that was to happen to them, the city's not on the hook for a $27,000 trailer if we tried that first.
My question is around like signage, because obviously you want to train like, you know, people who are on the mall who are looking, because I'll be honest, I have my kids downtown, and they have to go, and I'm not in a position to go and actually like use one of the services of a restaurant and, and take them all in there, and we need a place to go. And so I think that it would be helpful just for folks even traversing the mall, or on the other side of the mall that are in the parks, to have signage that can direct them, even to this pilot study, I think it's important to have that kind of communication.
Yeah, I'll see what we can do.
Yeah, I don't know how two blocks off the mall is going to prevent some of the concerns that we're hearing about. I don't think that's going to alleviate those concerns, or give people, you know, concerns from the business owners and residents, or give people a place to go, that, because two blocks doesn't seem like the best option.
So just from a urban setting, if they're over in the park, at Market Street Park, that's basically two blocks over to the, the mall, and we have an issue behind the McIntyre Building. And we have an issue behind the McIntyre Building. And I would not think, I would not, I would not think that, that problem would go away with the restroom facility on the mall because it's, again, just two blocks. But the folks that are, you know, behaving in that manner are not likely to travel two blocks anyway.
But if the majority of people are downtown on the mall and there's a space on the mall that people know that maybe that twenty-one day behavior change thing, whatever, you know, that, you know, it's there, you can go to it, will happen. I mean, I think it's about making sure that people feel welcome and not pushed out and that there's some dignity to, I hope, because I wouldn't go in probably any of these. But I would hope that we are purchasing something that people would actually want to use and not just anything because we may not use them.
So at some point, it will go back to citing and getting the concurrence of the Downtown Business Association. The location is going to be difficult with the amount of cafe space that we have. It really limits our locations on that end of the mall. We can certainly look into it further, but it's an interim. If you would like to try the pilot project, we can move forward with that. It's relatively inexpensive. Services for two units is about five hundred dollars a month and we have about fifteen hundred dollars in fence reconfiguration.
Is it too late to have a discussion with the new tech building about adding outside restrooms?
Who was that woman doing?
The new building that's going up at the end of the mall.
Yeah, I'm sure they're building permits and their drawings and design are completed by now. I mean, they're, they're pretty far along in the project.
And is there any reason why we can't engage in conversations with the Haven? Because they have, I mean, and that is, and again, if we, the...
Or the tech building.
Anyway, that, that was just the, what had been discussed in the past. And the Portland Louvre is a very nice little design.
We'll have the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other business? I do have one. Anyone?
I've got a suggestion coming. You don't give us a suggestion?
Oh, no, he's gone. All right, so, and we talked about it again, but I did bring up the travel, using the Equity Fund to potentially sponsor the, some travel scholarships to Winnebago, one of our sister cities. And we do have, are you going to come up? And so, again, we talked about this a little bit together during an open, you know, session. But to just hear from, hear about the, this just started two years, has it been two, four years? Maybe a year and a half? And the dollars were fundraised. There's great interest in the, from the update, great interest in the next set of travel. And we took fifty-six people to Winnebago, twenty-eighteen. And it was a great educational healing trip. So if you want to come up, just introduce yourself and good evening.
Good evening, honorable city council members. My name is Nana Achimpon Garty. And I am the president of the Charlottesville Greenba Foundation. In twenty-eighteen, the president of Ghana, who happens to also bear the same first name, Nana Akufwado, officially launched the Year of Return in Washington DC, which had twofold, very important messages. One was for Africans in the diaspora to go back home to the continent to meet, well, with their, with their brothers and sisters on the continent. And secondly, also, as four hundred years of the first slaves arriving in Jamestown. Many cities and communities have taken advantage of that and have gone to visit to understand that Nancy Pelosi led the Congressional Black Caucus to visit Ghana as part of that program. So I'm here tonight. But unfortunately, the, the Charlottesville has not taken advantage of that. Charlottesville, that has a very vibrant sister city in, in, in Ghana, has not taken advantage of that. And so I'm here tonight to remind you of the request our foundation has submitted for fifteen thousand from the council's Equity Fund to enable numerous low-income Charlottesville residents to participate in upcoming visits to our sister city in Ghana. As with your financial support of the Civil Rights Pregrimmage last year, these funds will allow many local residents to learn more about a very important part of our history. Ghana was one of the main transit points for the transatlantic slave trade. And as we explore issues of racial equity in our community, it is very, very important that more of our residents develop an understanding of the origins and legacy of slavery. Earlier this evening, I, I, I was just coming from that meeting. Our foundation held a public information session about these upcoming trips. And the level of interest is very, very, very high. But many who wish to go cannot afford the full cost of travel, which is very unfortunate. They want to learn about their roots and break that information back here to Charlottesville. But cost is a serious barrier. Sister City exchanges should not be limited to people of high incomes, you know? Council's allocation of fifteen thousand dollars will only represent about eleven percent of the total budget of these trips. But we will use your donation to leverage marching funds from other donors. So your support will be very critical. We are hoping to double the number of full or partial travel scholarships we can offer in twenty-twenty compared to our last trip in twenty-eighteen. The small allocation from the Equity Fund will go a long way towards helping us to achieve this goal. I also hope some of you will be able to join us on one of these delegation. And I'm looking at everybody here to see who... Fortunately for us, our Honorable Mayor Walker, thank you again for leading our twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen delegation. And Winneba is always mentioning your name.
It was a great, great experience.
Yeah. They are, they are even thinking of making you a queen, anyway.
I am a queen. Glad somebody's acknowledging you.
You represent our community, you represent our community, the Charlottesville community with grace and honor. I know you will not be voting on this matter tonight, but I hope you, you will be willing to take it up at your next meeting. And all what I can say is thank you for your consideration. We are happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you again, and God bless you all.
Thank you. And just before, I, I just want to give an update about the little that I know, because I don't know everything. But some of the things that happened since the twenty-eighteen trip is I've met with Pamela Sutton-Wallace, who's leaving, about expanding, so that's in kind of limbo. But we had a meeting in June about expanding the services, the hospital services, and how that partnership could look. One of our firefighters, Greg Wright, was a member of the twenty-eighteen trip. They just took three, maybe, I think?
Two, Greg Wright and McKell, two firefighters.
Fighters just went back and helped the fire department work on getting up to standards and looking at in terms of the needs of the fire department, safety, looking at proximity location to be able to expand and make sure they can get to fire services. And I even got a skirt dropped off from their trip. But, and told all about it in person, what they had done while they were there. We had a conversation with the school system about equipment that they were no longer using that normally would have been thrown away. And that equipment was sent over for the schools. And we shipped how many, how much stuff over?
We, as a matter of fact, a lady in, in Woodbridge gave us ninety bicycles to ship over to be given to schoolchildren and workers who cannot afford owning cars. And so we had to ship all of them there last year. It was very...
But members of the delegation, the large delegation, there were donations. There was an email sent out just, hey, there's a shipment going to Ghana in a few months. And I think it was the largest donation ever sent. The economic benefits of the travel to the city on top of the learning experience and the, there was supposed to be a trip that was attempting to be coordinated for this August for members of the Winneba community to travel here. And hopefully that will happen, but that's the kind of exchange. So it was a very rich and vibrant trip. I didn't get to relax much because I was on all the time, but it was definitely worth it. And so, just when considering the, the allocation and also as a member who went to France and who had a great experience in France too, but there wasn't diversity in race or income on that trip. And so I know, just based on those two trips in the same year, two sister city relationships, if there is, this is happening the way it is because it's a desire to take members from the community for enhancement of themselves and for the Winneba community, one. And, you know, because of that desire, there, there is an, they are making sure to do the fundraising and the ask to make sure that it's possible. So I just wanted to share some of the things that came out, and that's not everything, but that's just some of the things that came out, out of our trip. So they were very productive, productive trips. And we're working on building a library. What? I'm excited. It's a lot of stuff happening.
I got you, it was a lot of fun. We with you.
Yes, and so that's, it's good.
So please, come, let's go. Come, let's go. You will come back with a, a rich experience that you, you, you've never had before. Thank you.
I think it's a phenomenal idea. Thank you, Mr. Nana. I, I know you guys work really hard. Just for one point of clarification, there's sometimes a misnomer, and we can have maybe this debate later, but the first group of enslaved Africans came from Angola. Not Ghana, there's a lot of people who often think that. But in fact, the first lady who stepped off the boat in sixteen nineteen, although there's some that said we were here in fifteen twenty-six, they called her Angela because she came from Angola. Although Ghana was, as we all know, a large slave port. Just had to put in that, that accurate historical fact there, because I think sometimes we miss that. But that's a debate we can have later. I'm in full support. I hope that we can, I think it's a phenomenal initiative, and I think the fifteen thousand dollars from the Equity Fund would be well used in this initiative.
Mayor Walker, the, I, I do want to say, and thank you, Mr. Garty. This is a real different mission than what has always been presented to the council about the sister cities program. So I certainly would entertain bringing this for discussion at a, at another council meeting. But I, I really think at this point, I need to better understand how the mission and the, of the sister cities program has changed. Because it's gone from, from what I'm hearing, a cultural exchange to actually getting involved with international assistance and providing technical assistance, which is, which is a valid orientation, but it's not something that this council has ever funded before. And so, again, to be, to be clear about what our policies are telling us we can afford, what our policies and how they relate to our budgets, I just think we need to revisit what is the policy behind the sister cities mission. I, I just, and, and that's, because this is, this is a broader, bigger mission. And then the other question I have, is this something to be in commemoration of the sixteen ninety, the four hundred years anniversary? In which case, this is a special event, which is another way to look at this. Or is this something that's ongoing? And those are some of the questions I have.
It's, it's, it's virtually something ongoing. But with your first assertion, I, I hope you, you can get hold of the memorandum of understanding which was signed here in twenty-ten. And everything is spelled out there, technical cooperation, almost every area.
It would be really great to see that, because I had...
You, you, you have a copy of that?
Of the sister cities enabling...
The memorandum of understanding that we signed between Charlottesville and, and Winneba. Yeah, almost everything is spelled out, the technical corporations, court child, everything.
And I think it's something that we need to look at, not just for this, but just the exchange. I know that I have an email that, and I think it's just been our investment in it. And I've talked to Dr. Atkins about this too. But there's a group of youth and a few teachers coming from our French, France sister city, Besa Son, in October. And they are coordinating that with Monticello. They do this exchange every other year. We are the sister city and we don't have the relationship with our school division. And a lot of that has been about allocation, you know, allocation of resources and, and who is willing to allocate those resources. So again, you know, this is, you know, one of the, when I went to France, I didn't have, my card didn't work. I couldn't get anything in terms of dollars, whether I was going to be able to check into the hotel. And they, the mayor, I didn't have any issues. He had his staff make sure that I was taken care of and that there was no worries. When they came here, we gave, had one dinner, right? And so it's really about us understanding, you know, like just vamping up, just overall, and whether this allocation is approved or not, which of course clearly I support, making sure that we understand the relationship and that it's going to take an investment and that should be more than just, you know, a, a one meal type of... and that should be more than just, you know, a one meal type of...
And then, all the more reason why this needs to be a budget discussion, as you all enter in with the new council and that if this is going to be a much more robust program than it's been before, this, I think, is the, is introducing that idea. And I, all I'm saying is that, that it's not been that way before, and we haven't budgeted for it, and I believe there's something like sixty-eight thousand dollars in the Sister Cities reserve. And so why isn't, and so that's the question, why isn't that being tapped? But if this is an additional mission or additional focus, then yeah, we definitely need to think about, make this a bigger discussion, put it on the agenda, and then it's going to have ramifications for budget discussions moving forward. And that's all. But it's just not, to me, I see this as a big, as a bigger conversation than only one ask tonight, and certainly I'm glad we're all in agreement, we're not voting on that tonight.
What's your deadline? I'm sorry. What's your deadline for when you need to know about the funds? What is your deadline in terms of when you need to know about the funds?
The deadline for when you would need to know about the funds?
The deadline, let me see, probably at the end of November, October, yeah.
Okay.
Councilman, and council will look at their overall budget and then look at the best path forward in terms of trying to fund that requested amount.
Yeah, because we have two delegation, the first delegation will be going in December, and then another delegation will be going in April, but then it is all part of this whole thing, yeah. Winnebago has two very big, important festivals. The biggest masquerading festival in Africa is in Winnebago, and it is used to usher in the New Year, and if you go, you will want to go back again. And then we also have the deer hunting festival, which we go to catch live deer, you know, with our bare hands, show how, you know, yeah, how tough we are.
We still need that here.
And that happens also in the first Saturday of May. And so we always want Charlottesville to experience these two, these two festivals.
Madam Mayor, I'll just say a couple, so, Mr. Nana, the community here is amazing. You're amazing. It sounds like a very important cause. It's very powerful to hear what the mayor's experience was. And I'm just going to sound like a broken record, because my concerns with off-budget allocations from the Equity Fund, which was established, are the same with every incredible story that we hear from every amazing community organization. We're now getting about one or two requests each meeting for special allocations from this fund. And the, and we, meanwhile, we put these amazing, we have seven hundred nonprofits in the area, all of whom have heartbreaking, powerful, gripping, important missions in the community. They do amazing work, everybody, and we make them run this gauntlet for amounts like ten thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars, five, and it has a huge amount of time that we put toward, and the mayor and others are trying to work on reform, reforming, refining that process. I have a very hard time with the precedent that we'd be setting up if we start giving, funding, funding travel and trips with taxpayer dollars, as compelling as the equity rationale is, and I could start seeing it unfold for other things, like what if with a France trip, you're like, well, we want to go see the Bonnous, and we want to see the people who are mired and, you know, whatever, I mean, I could just see many arguments coming up, and I think that it is a, it's, you know, it's, so anyway, I could see the challenges with the precedent, but I'm assuming it's going to come on the agenda. I hope that we're not, I hope there's not a big push to kind of, you know, create a sensation around this, around this funding allocation request, like we've seen in the past. I hope we can just consider it and discuss it. It's a very valid thing, but it does create an issue for starting to do this, especially for the upcoming council, where you're looking at these every meeting and multiple of them. It's going to, and it's a challenge. So, but I really appreciate the requests, and I appreciate what you're doing with it.
I would argue, Councilor Signor, I understand hardly where you're coming from, but that's essentially what we set up the Equity Fund for, was to address these kind of issues. When we've, we've seen in years past with like the ARBT process, or even how different funds have been allocated, there's been a disparity of sorts in terms of who's been receiving these funds, or who's been receiving resources. And that's part of what we've been trying to address in terms of equity, different initiatives that don't normally get funded, who may not always go through the laborious process, so that we can kind of level the playing field. I mean, there's not an ABRT process, in my opinion, that can, that's in which the Winnebago Foundation, or the Kana Foundation is going to come through, and which how they show they took, what, a hundred and some odd people to Ghana next year like that. That's not something that, in my opinion, just goes through ABRT. These are kind of nuanced situations, and I think if we get into a point in terms of how we allocate resources from the Equity Fund, and we look at them through the same lens in which we use traditional resources, we're going to find ourselves boxing out groups who wouldn't normally get the resources, and then we have the same process.
May I respond?
Yeah, sure.
So I think this has been a very, we have had this discussion going on, and Council, Councilor Bellamy, respectfully, I think it's a really good discussion, probably not to have for too long.
Yeah.
What I hear in that is a conflation of two different things. There's the, and I have misgivings about the Equity Fund for many reasons. I don't agree with the proposition that there's some kind, that there's discrimination in, against non-traditional funding recipients in the regular budget process, which is what I heard, what I just heard you say, that you would have to break up the regular budgeting process to let groups that need funding be able to get the funding they need and get out of a system that somehow isn't benefiting them. I don't think that's what we do. That, when I sit in the budgeting, the regular budgeting process, which starts this fall and goes on for six months, and is where we did CHAP, and where we, where we gave the schools a huge increase in their, and where we did all kinds of other, would go programs, lots of other equity-based funding, I don't see a discriminatory, and I think that it's, I can see that argument, but I don't think that it's correct. I don't, I don't think that you would have to get away from the regular system to somehow benefit groups who are being discriminated against, disadvantaged.
Discriminatory, I would say is, it's non-traditional. So like groups, if, even if you take this, this project, which in my opinion, I mean, yes, it needs continuous funding, but this specific request is kind of a one-off, and it's new for us. This isn't something in which, how they need the answer by the end of October, or November, rather, like these kind of things are fluid. And again, I don't think that our traditional ABRT process or our budgeting process is discriminatory, like we just keep out certain groups, but the process there in itself isn't one that's conducive for the equity projects that people have across the city. That's what I mean in terms of different...
And I'll just comment, based on the work that Councilor Hill and I did, and why I brought up the ABRT process and needing, is because it's been clearly that there has been some discriminatory aspects in it, and who gets funding, and that has been the comment for years. I don't think that this is a part of, you know, the conversation we're having tonight, but I just wanted to clear that up, since you all are having that conversation. That is an issue between who's selected, who gets the attention from staff, the primary staff member who was in charge of that. That has been a point that has been made for years. So that's a separate, you know, conversation now, which is the Viburn Communities Fund, but that was one of the reasons why I pushed so hard to make sure that that process was changed.
I mean, I think that it would be really helpful to get a readout of what we have, of the expenditures we've made from the Equity Fund so far. So if I remember, we did, we did New Hill, we did...
The Business Equity Fund?
Business Equity Fund.
The teachers from the schools.
And then, and then if you look back at the other special allocations over the last couple of years, there was the very controversial Small Business, the Downtown Business Association seventy-five, and we did Daughters of Zion eighty, I think, and then...
I think that came out of the SOA.
Oh, okay.
Daughters of Zion.
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be good with the new city manager in the seat to kind of get our arms around this stuff, because it does, it does open, there's, we got other sister cities, the precedent, we had not, this had not been city funds in the past. It does open a whole new train of requests. Yeah, absolutely, and...
That could be a good thing.
It could, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I have misgivings about this Equity Fund being the source of a, of a rolling budget that goes throughout the whole year, and that will create lots of inequities among other groups that also want to come for, for, you know, they're also in, you know, a month away, they need a decision, it's...
But I think in terms of looking at the equity piece, the whole purpose of that is groups who haven't been, or people who haven't traditionally received funds, and making sure that there's money allocated, you know, to them. It's, it's righting a wrong that may not be on this, you know, very established, like calendar, calendar line, and things come up all the time. And I guess the best way for me to, and if you have resources, when things come up, you either decide to do them, or you don't, but you have that priority. And for individuals or community members who don't have resources, they just know that they can't do it, right? And so what I am hearing a lot is just that, you know, maybe it's something that can't be done, or it has to go through this process, and then if, I mean, I don't see it as any different than what Councilor Galvin was just asking for in terms of prioritizing, of putting that language in, when you were just talking about in the CDPG and home funding.
Redepalment, Section Three.
Was there any other support or thoughts in regards to...
Again, all I'm saying is I think there's a bigger conversation, it's a bigger budget than I'm seeing that's coming out of this, for the Sister Cities in general, and I really want to get a better handle on what the implications are, because it's not only the, the way the other nonprofits may look at this, but also other sister city programs, are we going to open it all up as well for more scholarships for all of them, or, you know, what is, what are the, what are the parameters of this? And I think, I think Dr. Richardson has got an idea of how to proceed, and for when this comes to the, for discussion again.
Yeah, and then we'll give you a reading of all your Equity Fund expenditures, so you'll have that if that's a question.
I did one procedural question. I didn't want to interrupt the substantive debate, but sir, you had mentioned your deadlines, the end of October.
Yeah.
And it is worth noting that if the appropriation is over a thousand, there have to be two readings. So council only has two meetings in October, the seventh and twenty-first, so this would need to come before you for a first reading on October seventh. Just want to make, make folks aware that this, based on the deadline at the end of October, it's going to have to be at your next meeting, the first reading.
I would be in favor of this going on the next, on the upcoming agenda. Requires two readings. Ms. Hill? Okay. All right, cool.
All right.
There we have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So much. Once again, God bless you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Is there any other business? So we open up matters by the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Good evening again, Don Gather, city resident. Where we have been lacking in equality, we certainly have the opportunity for equity. This, this country and this community have done an extremely poor job in educating our citizenry on the true history of people who look like me. And I have to say that, Councilor Signor, Councilor Galvin, when you come forward with questions as you did just now, it reveals character. And I pray that between now and the meeting, that you search your souls and realize that this is something to benefit the minority community, not only here locally, but abroad. It's nonsensical to me that we would have questions of this type when seventy-five thousand dollars was thrown at the Downtown Business Association without a blink of an eye. There was no questioning, there was no, 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 no public outcry about that. But now, when it's something that benefits people who look like me, both locally and abroad, it's questioned and it's challenged, and it's bothersome, and it should be bothersome to everyone. So I just pray that between now and the time that the vote actually comes up, that you would search internally and realize that this is something beneficial for the community. Thank you.
We did have a discussion about the Downtown Business Association, though. There was a debate. I just wanted to point that out, that we did have it. Anyone else?
Nancy Carpenter. Yeah, it's great to see a discussion that happened five years ago finally come to a little fruition about public restroom facilities around the downtown mall. I can certainly sympathize with Ms. Hill, talking about having young children, and when they say, Mom, I gotta go, they're not going to wait five minutes to walk down downtown mall. I think the most humane thing to do is just, Christian thing to do, I guess, or spiritual thing to do, is just open up your business, let people use their bathroom. I myself have had to buy a five-gallon, three-dollar cup of coffee to be able to go to the bathroom. I'm sixty-four years old. Sometimes Mother Nature's a little different with me nowadays than it was when I was forty-two, or twenty-four, or twelve. Or perhaps you could give a little bit, think about giving a rebate on those precious cafe spaces to some of the businesses down there that would offer, because it's not only, you know, criminalizing the homeless that you're doing with what you're saying, it's also anybody else that's down there that needs to use the bathroom, no matter whether they're from North Downtown, from Crescent Hall, from Albemarle County, from wherever, you know, they, they have to make a purchase of food, more than likely, to be able to, you know, have a comfort station. And I think the other end of the mall away from the city hall is a way to put it, because when you have functions down here at the pavilion, you know, that area is cordoned off a lot of times, and you have to have a ticket that costs money to be able to utilize that space. So, you know, the Woodruff has, you know, I don't know what his plans are. I think I had heard that he was going to put back that outside little park area that was supposed to be the Vinegar Hill memorialization a few years ago. You all had adopted to do that. And I'm hoping that maybe, you know, the Arkville Lodge is coming down, and there's going to be a space there. I don't know if that's part of the Parks and Rec space for the downtown mall, or whether that's private property, but I think, you know, I don't think, it just confounds me, the discussion about the public restroom, when I think that there are some other ideas that can be floated, and I think, I'm sure a business owner would probably like to have some type of rebate on what they're charged on some of the space that they rent, if they would open up their businesses that have restroom facilities to the public. And that does not necessarily mean the people who are unsheltered. It means people like me too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? Okay. Me in the drawing.